Dear God, we praise you for your love that embraces us and gives us security. Your joy that uplifts us and gives us resiliency. Your peace that floods our hearts and gives us serenity. Your spirit that fills us and gives us strength and endurance. Be with these folks as they meet this morning, Lord, to maximize the hours of the day. Help them to think clearly without confusion, to speak honestly without ranker, to debate without division, to decide courageously without contention. May their rhetoric honor you and deal with issues and not with personalities. Grant the members of this council your grace to work today as patriots who love you and counted a high privilege to serve as leaders of our beloved city. Amen. I'd like to also read the priestly blessing from our God himself to Moses to the people, which says, "The Lord bless you and keep you. The Lord make his face shine on you and be gracious to you. The Lord turn his face toward you and give you peace." God bless you.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Every month, the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City helps us honor one teacher in the metro area as our Teacher of the Month, and this morning, we're going to honor Saretta Bridges. Saretta, you want to come forward? Let's show our appreciation. Come on up. And we have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas Saretta Bridges has been named Teacher of the Month for September 2016 by the Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Saretta Bridges earned her BA degree in elementary education from the University of Oklahoma, and whereas Saretta has taught at Bodine Elementary School in the Oklahoma City Public Schools District for 10 years. Saretta dreamed of being an elementary school teacher since she was a child and was profoundly influenced by a special teacher. Whereas Saretta Bridges believes in professional development and dedicates her time to learning and implementing the most modern approaches to educating students. Whereas she believes in community partnerships and started a nonprofit to assist with needs in southeast Oklahoma City. Whereas Saretta was honored to be chosen for the Bodine Elementary School as Teacher of the Year for 2015 to 16, and was named first runner-up for the district's Teacher of the Year. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Saretta Bridges on her selection as the September 2016 Teacher of the Month by Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Fifth grade teacher. Let's show our appreciation.
Mayor, city council, committee members, I'm honored to be here. I am grateful to be recognized as Teacher of the Month. Teaching comes with many challenges, like most service-oriented professions, there's a lot that needs to be done, and most of it is done behind the scenes. Teachers are called to do much more than just teach reading, writing, and arithmetic. We are big brothers, big sisters, nurses, coaches, counselors, surrogate parents. That's why this recognition means so much. It's a validation that someone sees and someone knows the hard work and the effort and the sacrifice that we do to do what we love. And I could never do it alone. My principal is here. I'd like to thank all of the students and professionals that I work with at Bodine. We work very hard with what we have, and we're committed to the success of our students as we grow together as a community. This recognition does more than just validate my efforts, but the efforts of all of our students and the families that we serve. Thank you.
And we will need to pass this as a resolution, so we're actually going to vote on this, Saretta, so good luck. I don't know how it's going to...
(laughing).
All right, cast your votes.
No worries.
That passes unanimously. Thank you. All right.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I might make a comment. The renaissance that has happened at Bodine School is largely the responsibility of this lady. It is an amazing renaissance to watch in an inner-city school to do what they've done there. It's in my word, I'm very proud of what they've done, and it's...
And you're referring to the principal? Yeah, who, she's also a former recipient of that award, yeah.
I know, I know. But it's just, it's a real blessing to see what's happened there. And it's hard work, a lot of neighborhood involvement, but the main involvement, the main thrust has come from the staff of Bodine School. It's really a nice...
All right, let's call out the Navy. The Navy days are coming forward, and we have some of our uniformed leaders here. I had a chance to spend a few minutes with our men and women in uniform this morning. They come from all over the United States, as close as Westmore High School and as far away. There were some from New England, from Vermont, and everywhere in between. And Navy days are coming up out of Tinker. And Captain McCabe, we have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
It is honored to have the presence of the United States Navy in our community. Whereas more than 1,000 active-duty sailors and 200 officers are stationed at Tinker Air Force Base to support the Tacoma mission with the Navy's E-6B aircraft, and where 400 active-duty and reserve sailors are assigned to 15 different reserve units at Navy Operational Support Center in Oklahoma City. Whereas more than 45 active-duty Navy recruiters are stationed throughout Oklahoma City enlisting the best and the brightest our city has to offer. The United States Navy has an annual economic impact of over $100 million in the greater Oklahoma City area. The citizens of this great city have a long history of supporting the crew of their namesake submarine, the USS Oklahoma City, and the USS Oklahoma Memorial at Pearl Harbor. Whereas sailors will be honored at the OKC Navy Ball, one of the nation's largest Navy Balls, on October 6th at the National Cowboy and Western Heritage Museum. Whereas sailors and their families will enjoy entertainment and river sports at the OKC Navy Day on the Oklahoma River. OKC Navy Days will provide free admission to the Oklahoma State Fair for children of our active-duty sailors. Whereas Galizia Country Club and OKC Navy Days will host a golf tournament on Monday, October 10th for local active-duty sailors. Whereas the citizens of Oklahoma City wish to honor the men and women who have served in the United States Navy during the 11th Annual OKC Navy Days. Now therefore, Mick Cornett, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the occasion of the aforementioned events as United States Navy Days in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation. Joy sailors. Thank you. Captain?
I thank everyone for the recognition. We've had a great relationship here in Oklahoma City with the people of Oklahoma. For 24 years, the Navy's been at Tinker Air Force Base. We look forward to continuing the relationship and building on it. Our sailors do great work in the community. The community comes out and says thank you with things like this in Navy Days. I really can't say enough. And when I travel the country talking with Navy leadership and I tell them that Oklahoma City's a Navy town, they laugh and smile, and they go, "Yeah, okay." But that's only because they haven't been here. Because as soon as they get here, and we bring them in for the Navy Balls from the coast, they see it. They see the love, they see the flag-waving patriotism here in the Midwest, the heartland, and they can't say enough about it once they leave.
Very proud of them.
Yes, sir.
We'll show it one more time. Thank you.
Mayor, I had the privilege of, I had the privilege of attending the change-of-command ceremony a couple weeks ago in San Diego for the USS Oklahoma City, and it was equally impressive. Those young men and women that serve in the Navy and represent Oklahoma City in our submarine is really a great thing to get to experience. Thank you for that opportunity.
Absolutely. Thank you for reminding us of that moment out in San Diego. All right, now we're going to honor our Employee of the Month, and if you can imagine, over 4,000 employees in the city of Oklahoma City, and each month, we try and select one to honor. So it's quite an honor when this occurs. We do this with the Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club, who allows us to support this one officer. And in this case, I kind of gave it away there, it is a police officer. It's Fred Moon, who's been on the force for nearly 35 years. So Fred, if you would come forward. Karen, why don't you come up too? Congratulations, Fred. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Fred Moon has been a city employee for 34 years and works for the Uniform Support Division of the Police Department. Whereas Fred Moon investigates all the derelict vehicle concerns reported to the Action Center. He receives new requests every day, and he single-handedly covers all 621 square miles of Oklahoma City. Whereas Fred investigates each concern and takes appropriate action if the vehicle is in violation, which can require more than one trip to a location to make sure the violation is corrected by the owner. Whereas Fred has done an outstanding job keeping our city streets clean from abandoned or stolen vehicles for the last nine years, because he truly cares about working the cases in a timely manner and rarely has a request that is overdue. Whereas Fred Moon is dedicated and goes above and beyond his duties many times to handle some very difficult and unusual cases. Fred participates in the Action Center's Code Enforcement Workshop every year, where he's always well-received by residents, and he was honored by the Action Center in 2008 for his dedication to customer service. Whereas Fred Moon is a great representative of the Police Department because of his outstanding service to the community and the professionalism he displays. This council desires to recognize Fred Moon for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the city of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Fred Moon, September 2016, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
Let's show our appreciation to Fred and the rest of the officers in our Oklahoma City Police Department. And Fred, we do have to vote on this, so once again, everybody's holding their breath. Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. And I will mention that Karen is a kindergarten teacher in Oklahoma City, so I'm not really sure who has the tougher job between the two of them. But Fred is nearing retirement, and so Fred, if we don't have a better opportunity to say thank you for your 35 years of service, let this go down as the opportunity for the council and the people here in the room to show our appreciation for your 35 years.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. No, just thank you.
All right, thank you. Congratulations. All right, if you're following along on the council agenda, we're on item 3C. And a few weeks back, we talked a little bit about the Zika virus and our ongoing concerns about Oklahoma and how susceptible we were. Following that up, Gary Cox is here from the Oklahoma City County Board of Health and wants to kind of give us an update on the county's preparations. And yeah, well, come on up. Gary, why don't you come too?
Yeah, Frank Barnes is going to kick it off, and then Gary will come up after.
Okay, and Frank Barnes is, of course, with the city staff.
And we're there. Okay, good morning. I'm Frank Barnes. I'm the Emergency Manager for the city of Oklahoma City, and I'm very quickly just going to give you an overview of our mosquito-borne disease program. So our overall approach, and we had presented this to you in April, was number one, was messaging, is getting information out to the community about what the threat is, the vulnerability, and what they can do to protect themselves. Number two is conducting enhanced surveillance, and through public work, stormwater quality, and the efforts of Derek Johnson, that we're trapping and collecting mosquitoes that are then turned over to City-City Health Department, who test them for the presence of mosquito-borne diseases, helps us identify parts of the city that we're seeing mosquitoes that are infected, so that we can concentrate our efforts on those areas. Applying Larvicide. The focus of our efforts have been to reduce the mosquito population, and the best way to do that is by preventing the mosquitoes from hatching, and this involves placing Larvicide in standing bodies of water. Habitat modification, which efforts through solid waste management and public work, street traffic drainage maintenance, to reduce those habitats on public land. Traveler surveillance through the City-City Health Department, local transmission response, which is also the responsibility of the City-City Health Department, and then overall coordination, which is handled by the Office of Emergency Management. So that's the overall approach to mosquito-borne diseases, which includes West Nile virus, Zika, and any other mosquito-borne diseases. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Gary and let him brief you further.
Good morning, and thank you, Frank. We have great cooperation and support from his office, and we do appreciate it. Well, thank you for the opportunity to just give you a little update, information about Zika this morning. I think generally, in the public health world, it's not a question of if we're going to be impacted by Zika, it's a matter of when we'll be impacted and to what degree. And we do have, the Health Department has an all-hazards plan that would apply to any emergency, public health emergency that we'd have to deal with, and we do, as Frank says, we do have a Zika-specific plan, response plan as well. As you know, the infected mosquitoes, the ADs, Aegypti, and really, the mosquitoes are the culprit in this whole situation. And 80% of the cases are usually mild. Many times, folks don't even know they were infected. That's the good news. The not-so-good news is the unfortunate thing, as you've probably seen on the news, that especially concerning to pregnant women, and that's a real issue. Currently, there's no treatment, no vaccine, although hopefully, a vaccine will be developed sometime, but it could be sometime before that actually happens. As far as our current situation, globally, as you've seen, outbreaks are occurring in many countries, in South America, Central America, Mexico, and the Caribbean. Here in the United States, we have 43 locally acquired cases. In Florida, as you see on the map, and this is a map of Miami-Dade County, and that's where mostly those 43 cases are. And they are not travel-related cases, those are locally acquired in Miami. There's a travel advisory for pregnant women in the Miami Beach and area of the Wynwood Neighborhood, and as you see in the map there, it's a first travel advisory that's been issued in many, many years here in the United States. To give you some idea of the scope, in Puerto Rico, almost 14,000 cases, locally acquired cases, have been reported. Back here at home, we have 26 travel-related cases in the state of Oklahoma, one pregnant woman involved. Here in Oklahoma County, we have five travel-related cases in Oklahoma County, zero pregnant women involved. And our epidemiologists are monitoring these five cases as we speak. So now Phil is going to come and give you a little bit more detail about our plan.
Thanks, Gary. Of course, this is our actual Zika action plan. This actually comes straight off the CDC template. Currently, we are in Level 1, because we're in an active mosquito-biting season right now. If we were in Zero, of course, that's when it cools off, we'll be in Zero. We'll only get to Level 2 if we get a confirmed local transmission. Hopefully, that will not occur. Like I said, we're not a Zero risk here, we're a low risk, but it's possible. Just a matter of time to see if we get the right mosquito populations in here. Luckily, right now, we don't have ADs, Aegypti. We haven't found any in Oklahoma City. We've actively trapping them, and we've actually added some additional traps that are specific for catching ADs mosquitoes, and they are catching them, but they're catching ADs albipictus. Do you guys have any questions on this? It's a phased response plan. You basically roll from one to the next, depending on what situation we actually get into. Go ahead, Frank. One of the things that we wanted to highlight this year is one of the reasons we've had more positive mosquito pools this year than we have ever had, lots of them for West Nile virus, and yet our human cases remain low. We would like to be able to take all the credit for that. You know, some of it may be environmental, some of it may be the bioreuma conditions of the mosquito population, but we know that our communications plan that we've worked together with the city has been extraordinary this year. If you look at the amount of money that we've got as far as free outdoor advertising, all the advertisers were glad to do it. You can't, almost can't drive around and see one of these digital billboards and not see one of our mosquito advertisements, so it's really good. Done a lot of radio and TV interviews. We think, the one thing that's been really positive is with all of the activity on Zika, people really are paying attention to mosquitoes now. So we think they are actually wearing insect repellent. That is the key. If we do that and combine it with habitat remediation and some of the other items, we think we're in good shape. Go ahead, Frank. Can you play that? Let's see if that'll work. This is just one of the little things that we developed. I don't know if that's going to play. You can see this on YouTube or see it on our website. It's a little blurb, it's 30-second commercial about West Nile virus, mosquito-borne vector disease.
When it comes to mosquitoes, you gotta... Fight the bite, don't catch a disease. Fight the bite, just remember three D's and a P. D, drain. Drain stagnant water. D, dress. Wear long sleeves and pants. D, D. Repel when you're outdoors. P, prevent. Reduce your exposure. Fight the bite, don't catch a disease. Fight the bite, just remember three D's and a P. This message brought to you by the Oklahoma City County Health Department. Go to OCCHD.org for more information.
That's really cute. I actually caught my grandkid singing that the other day, so hopefully that works. We wanted to just be available for questions, if you had any questions. I know there's been a lot of controversy in the Florida area, especially with the spraying of Nalid, and, you know, we're hypervigilant here to spraying. We really are. That's going to be a worst-case scenario if we ever get there, so...
I think the point of this was just to, you know, let people know that we are taking precautions. We do know that the first freeze is probably, you know, at least a month away, probably two months away, and then, of course, it's going to be next year and the year after, and we don't know if this is going to be ever increasing, but no reason to think it won't. And that West Nile virus may be a larger concern to us than Zika at this particular point in time. Safe to say? Ed, you've had some opinions on this. Do you want to say anything?
I'll let Megan address some of that as well.
Okay.
Thanks for putting this together. I think this is so important. So I think this is very interesting about ADs albipictus. I've never heard that before, that that can transmit. ADs Aegypti, you're not seeing in Oklahoma City, but that, since you guys came here last, it seems like that is showing up in southwest Oklahoma, and that that's maybe a new material change?
We did see that report. That was, actually, OSU caught those mosquitoes down in Altus. They caught at least a couple females. I haven't heard anything since then. I know we have active surveillance methodology going on here. Luckily, we still have not caught any here.
Can I ask you, because it seems like in Florida and everywhere, pesticides are not as effective as people would hope. There's a political debate in Florida. You just had like dozens and dozens of the legislators sign something asking for genetically-modified mosquitoes to be allowed to be released as a countermeasure. Is that, are you having internal discussions about that? I mean, if this were to come to Oklahoma, Oklahoma City, is that, instead of having that discussion, once you've already had transmissions, is that discussion occurring ahead of time?
Well, nothing's going to be off the table, but I'll just tell you, the genetically-modified mosquitoes are ADs Aegypti mosquitoes.
Right.
Right now, we don't have a viable population to even release them to. So at this point, really not much to do there. But if that were to occur, possibly.
Okay.
See, all they are is sterile males.
Right. Let me ask you a final question. It seems like you can't explain the transmission just on mosquito bites, that something else is going on. I think in the last couple of weeks, we learned that the Zika virus can be, can live in our tier, in tiers. We don't know about humans, but we know in mice, it can live in tiers. But maybe more frightening is that it can, men can transmit it for six months in semen after being infected. Shouldn't we think of this as a sexually transmitted disease as well as a mosquito-borne illness?
Right, so when we monitor these travelers that do come up positive for Zika virus, we provide them education and recommendations to limit the sexual transmission risk. So if they are symptomatic males, we recommend six months of protected sex or abstaining from sex, as well as waiting six months to, if they wish to conceive a child. Women can also transmit it to men. They're still investigating that, but it's about an eight-week window. So we make sure that we're educating individuals, and if they do have any sexual contacts, we'll talk to them and provide them education as well.
Okay.
All right, thank you. And you wanted to add a few comments?
Just that West Nile virus is more of a risk here, and we are monitoring our West Nile virus cases as vigilantly as we are Zika transmission cases.
All right, well, thank you all for your work.
Thank you. We want to thank Frank and Mr. Milton, Mr. Johnson, Christie. Great partnership.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Gary. All right, we're on item 3D of the council agenda, and this is appointments for the CVB. Is there a motion? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 4 is the Journal of Council Proceedings. 4A is to receive the journal for August 30th, and 4B is to approve the journal for August 16th. Any comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item 5 is a request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, there's a few this morning, starting on page 18, under item 9F1. Item A, 6437 College Avenue, west of Abbey Stricken, the owner secured. Item C, 6417 Johnny Terrace, west of Abbey Stricken, the owner has secured. Item G, 3217 South Villa, west of Abbey Stricken, the owner secured. Item L, 507 Northwest 24th Street, west of Abbey Stricken, the owner secured. Item M, 3229 Northwest 26th Street, west of Abbey Stricken, the owner secured. Item Q, 2600 Southwest 80th Street, west of Abbey Stricken, the owner has secured. And item R, 1100 Northwest 103rd Street, west of Abbey Stricken, the owner has secured. Moving to page 19, under item 9G1. Item A, 6437 College Avenue, west of Abbey Stricken, the owner has secured. Item C, 6417 Johnny Terrace, west of Abbey Stricken, the owner has secured. Item G, 3217 South Villa, west of Abbey Stricken, the owner secured. Item K, 507 Northwest 24th Street, west of Abbey Stricken, the owner secured. Item L, 3229 Northwest 26th Street, west of Abbey Stricken, the owner secured. Item P, 2600 Southwest 80th... Item P, 2600 Southwest 80th Street, west of Abbey Stricken, the owner has secured. And Item Q, 1100 Northwest 103rd Street, west of Abbey Stricken, again, the owner has secured.
Are there any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we'll move on to Item 6. This is revocable permits. We have 13 this morning. That may be a record. We would love for everyone to come up as we go through their event and tell us briefly about the event, because we have so many, we probably won't be able to spend as much time as we would normally like, but we'll start with Item 6A. This is a request from ALSAC St. Jude's Children's Research Hospital. And is anyone here representing that event? And we will need your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. I'm Emily Drover. Address is 400 North Walker, Suite 170, Oklahoma City, 73118.
And you're going to be holding a walk run on September 24th in Wheeler Park?
Yes. Yes, we're holding a 5K walk run to benefit St. Jude's Children's Research Hospital, and we'll be starting 8:30 that morning, and we'll be cleared out by noon at the latest.
We hope you raise a lot of money. It's a great cause. Meg, it's in Ward 6. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you and good luck. All right, Item 6B is a request to hold the AIDS Walk of Oklahoma City and a 5K run. This will be on September 25th in Ward 6. And it looks like we have someone who signed up to speak. Are you James?
James Sedarius.
Hey, James, we'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, it's James Sedarius, and the address is 3105 Somerset Place, Oklahoma City, 73116. And this is our 18th year for the walk and the eighth year for the run. All of our proceeds stay in the community and go to providers that give services, direct care to people living with HIV and AIDS. And our event this year is centered around the Marriott Gardens, and the run includes part of the Oklahoma River Trail.
All right, how can people sign up?
They can go online and register at OKCAidsWalk.org, I believe is the.
All right.
Or on the day of the event as well. We have registration beginning at 7:30. The walk is free.
All right, motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. James, thanks. All right, Item C is a request with the Down Syndrome Association to hold the Down Syndrome Festival and 5K. And Jill is here. Jill, we'll need your name and address for the record.
Good morning. My name is Jill Harrison. Address, 600 Northwest 23rd, Suite 206, Oklahoma City, 73103. We'll be holding our 22nd Annual Down Syndrome Festival and 5K at the Bricktown Ballpark on October the 1st to raise money, support inclusion and awareness for people with Down Syndrome in our community, and all of the funds will stay local. We're expecting about 6,000 people.
And we'd encourage people to sign up and play a part. This is in Ward 7, John. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Jill. All right, Item D is a request with JDRF International to hold the One Walk, and this will also be in Ward 7. Good morning. We'll need your name and address. Carrie?
Yes. Carrie Ledbetter, 2212 Northwest 50th, Suite 158C, Oklahoma City, 73112.
And remind us, JDRF stands for?
Formerly the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation.
And your event will be this Saturday?
This Saturday, the 17th, starting set up around 6:00 AM. Walk starts at 9:00, and I think will be done around 11:00.
All right, and this is in Ward 7, John. Is there a second? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Carrie. All right, Item 6E is a request from Kent Events, Inc. to hold Wiggle Out Loud, and this will be Sunday. Good morning. We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. It's Kent Steven Myers, 7612 North May Avenue, 73116.
And tell us about Wiggle Out Loud.
Wiggle Out Loud is a family music festival. This is year four, so we're excited to bring it back to Oklahoma City. We've moved locations from Bicentennial Park to the Marriott Gardens, and Marriott Gardens Foundation has partnered with Children's Hospital volunteers to produce the event this year. It is a fundraiser for Children's Hospital volunteers, as well as a friend-razor for Children's Hospital.
Oh, great. Well, good luck.
It's an incredibly fun event. It's really great.
It is.
We look forward to it. It will be this coming Sunday from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Volunteer physicians are still available, which can be found at wiggleoutloud.com.
Okay, so bring your kids downtown and enjoy Wiggle Out Loud. Meg, it's in Ward 6.
Move approval.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Kent.
Thank you.
All right, Item 6F is a request with the Oklahoma Lawyers for Children to hold the Masquerade 5K, and this event would also be this Saturday. Good morning.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is John Osland with Ultramax Sports, 2300 Brookside Avenue in Edmond. Oklahoma Lawyers for Children is holding their inaugural Masquerade 5K. It'll be from the Juvenile Justice Center about 8:00 in the morning. We'll take a route around the south side, working with the city police. Expect to be done about noon for the event, first year of the event. Looking forward to a great turnout.
Well, it's a great organization. Thank you for all the work you do on behalf of children. Ed, it's in Ward 2. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you. All right, Item 6G is a request from the Plaza District to hold the Plaza District Festival, not this weekend, but the following weekend, and Annie is here. Nope, that's not Annie. Wrong person. Come on forward. I got ahead of myself.
Oh, I didn't. My name is Kayla Lewis. I live at 1125 North McKinley, 73106, and we will have the 18th Annual Plaza District Festival, September 24th, from 12:00 PM to 10:00, yeah, 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM. We have food trucks, local artists, artist booths, and two music stages this year.
All right, so that's a week from Saturday. What are the hours going to be?
12:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Okay. And Meg, that's in Ward 6.
This festival has grown so much in those 18 years, it's incredible. Very excited to have it. I move approval.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Item 6H is a request with Road Runners Club of America to hold the Red Coyote Run Toberfest 5K. You're back.
Hello, all. John Osland again with Ultramax Sports, appearing for Red Coyote Running and Fitness. This year's event, which has traditionally been held over in the Classic Curve area, is moving to Midtown in cooperation with Flat Fassler Hall. Will start and finish 2:00 in the afternoon on Sunday. Will run through the Heritage Hills area. It is a grassroots running and fitness festival, celebrating the Oklahoma City running community, Oklahoma, cooperation with Fassler Hall this year. They're making a new partnership, bringing a little life into the Midtown area, and then also alleviating some of the congestion and complications. The Classic Curve area and location of the event has been in years past, so we're, again, looking for a great afternoon event over there and hope to see you guys.
And that'll be October 16th, and it's in Ward 6.
So we're going to bring all that confusion down to Heritage Hills, which is exciting, too. I move approval.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, Item 6I is a request from St. Francis of Assisi Church and Rosary School to hold the Rosary and St. Francis Oktoberfest. Is anyone here representing this organization today? Now Annie's here.
I'm Annie Maynard, here on behalf of Rosary School. It's 1919 Northwest 18th, 73106.
And tell us about your event.
This is for a fun run that we have with our school and parish through Gatewood. This is our 28th year having this event. After that, we have a private event on our school grounds for our parishioners and families.
Wonderful. I was just at your facility about a couple of months ago for an event. It's beautiful, and the neighborhood there looks so good. Gatewood has just come so far in the last few years. You can really tell people are taking care of the neighborhood. So get out and support this fun run, and again, the date is October 2nd.
Yes.
All right, Meg, you want to make the motion?
I do. I'd like to move approval.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6J is a request from the Color Run LLC to hold the Color Run on October 1st. Is there anyone here representing this organization? All right, I know this event has been held near the racetrack and the zoo the last several years. I attended it a couple of years ago. John, I think you were there when I went out. I remember now, yeah. You want to make a motion to put the Color Run on again? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. All right, Item 6K is a request with Ultramax Sports to hold the Tour de Barbecue, October 9th, and this one will be downtown.
Good morning, everybody. Once again, John Osland, Ultramax Sports, 2300 Brookside Avenue in Edmond. The Tour de Barbecue is a brand-new kind of cycling event that we're bringing to Oklahoma City. It's been done successfully in Kansas City for a number of years. This year's event will benefit the Stevenson Cancer Center. It is more or less a cycling barbecue crawl. The athletes, similar to how you might do at MS-150, sign up and pledge to raise money for cancer research here in Oklahoma City. The athletes will travel around town, following traffic, normal traffic concerns, and they will visit a handful of barbecue stops around the Oklahoma metro area. In Kansas City, it's kind of become almost a barbecue competition. In our first year in Oklahoma City, we have some great partners already on board, like Rarals, Backdoor Barbecue, Flying Pigs. We're very excited to bring the event for the first year here in Oklahoma City. It will base out of the Mickey Mantle Avenue area in Bricktown. The athletes will start, travel around town, sampling little bits of barbecue that the restaurants can basically use to promote themselves, and then rejoin downtown in Mickey Mantle Plaza for a post-event wrap-up party.
Yeah. How many miles will they be going total?
There are three possible distances, 15, 30, and 60 miles. The routes around town depend on our final lineup of barbecue restaurants, and again, we'll have several of those looped in around the downtown area.
All right, well, Stevenson Cancer Center is certainly a great addition to Oklahoma City, and they always need money. John, it's in Ward 7. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks.
Sure.
All right, Item 6L is a request with David Wood to hold the Red Man Triathlon. And this event is, it's not this weekend, but the following weekend on Saturday.
Correct. David Wood, 6012 Marlowe Lane, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73132. This is the 12th Annual Red Man Triathlon, but I think the distinction this year for us is that we are the hosts of the 2016 ITU Long Distance World Championships. So we'll have athletes from 43 foreign countries. Will be occupying administrative site at the Boathouse District, and then what's referred to as the Field of Play for them will be our normal location at Lake Hefner.
Yeah, always wonderful to see that many healthy bodies swimming in Lake Hefner. It's just an amazing sight to see them swim out there and then swim around and then come back in.
The great thing about the event is there's over 1,400 competitors, there's thousands of spectators, and this year, we have people coming from 43 countries. I asked Larry today about participating in the triathlon, but I think the water's a little too cold for us.
I checked it this morning. It's 77 degrees. Just perfect.
All right.
Yep.
Well, John, thanks for your years of service to this effort. How about a motion? It's in 1, 2, and 8. So Mark, why don't you make the motion?
Move the motion. Move the item, excuse me.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. All right, we'll recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. Oh, I was, oh, you're right. I was one early. Item 6M, a request with the Water Utilities Trust to hold the Red Man Triathlon and Half Triathlon. I'm not sure why these are in separate motions, but they are.
One deals with streets, one deals with the water, so I'll move the item.
So the last one we did was for the, for the right-of-way in the streets, and then, so this has to be a separate permit to use the Lake Hefner as one of the venues? Okay.
I'll move the item.
All right, so there's a motion, and now a second. All right, passed unanimously. All right, we'll recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are three items. Any comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Six items here. Any comments or questions on the PPA?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, Item B is the bid for a contractor to move another piece of the Land Run Monument to the site in East Bricktown, and I just want to remind everybody what an amazing piece of sculpture that is, and if you haven't been down there to see it, please go down. We just added a piece recently that's a fallen horse that's tripped over a trunk. It's just absolutely incredible, so I really want to encourage people to go down and see it. It's sort of nestled between the Bass Pro Shop and the river. It's an easy walk from the statue to go under I-40 over to the Boathouse District, but it's just a great opportunity for people to see it.
Just briefly on Item C, it's the lease for our First Wellness Center, which is in Ward 8, and I just want to say the one thing, when I go to and speak to HOAs in Ward 8, I always get questions about this, and our active senior citizens are really excited about this. It provides for physical healthness, mental healthness, and one person said it's just going to be plain fun. So it's on schedule according to David, and so we should have it open by early next year.
Can't wait. All right, we're voting on the PPA docket. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, just the claims and payroll today. Is there a motion?
No.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
I'm sorry, any different considerations?
All right, are there any individual considerations?
AL, like Larry.
All right, Ed, go ahead and get started with AL.
Just ask for an update. So we're just about a year out from the end of the MAPS III collections. I think it would end November of 2017.
December of 2017.
December of 2017. And so where are we in terms of collections? And are we over?
You know, yes, we are over. We've had an original contingency of about $17 million. I'm going to give a little history here, and it's maybe a little convoluted, but we started with a contingency of about $17 million, and then one of the first things we did is we take $30 million from the convention center and put it into the contingency to make it $47 million because of, we didn't know whether we were going to use the, for the substation relocation. And then we took $9 million out to do more sidewalks. We've taken some out, a few million dollars out, a couple million dollars out for the, or maybe even less than that, for the wellness centers for both some on one and two. We've taken some out for the modern streetcar, and then we put that $30 million plus a little more back into the convention center. And then during that time, we've had collections that have exceeded our projections for, we've done very well for a period of time, not recently, but a few years ago, we had some nice years where our collections exceeded revenue, and then as we bank this money to bid out the big projects, like the modern streetcar and the park and the convention center, there's interest being earned on that. So there's some interest income that comes in at that point in time. So if you net all those items out, our contingency right now is between 40 and 42 million dollars. And as you know, there's been some discussion to take a look at maybe using it as part of that to assist for a parking solution that would help out the chess speaker in the convention center and the park and the modern streetcar.
So even if sales tax collections come in a little, we should end up with a surplus a year from now?
I think a substantial surplus, yes.
And so what work is being done in the subcommittees, if any, to?
They're all posturing.
They're all what?
They're all posturing.
They're all posturing. And would, so would some of that posturing include the possibility of a fifth Senior Health and Wellness Center?
That's been mentioned, yeah.
Okay. So is that, that subcommittee is working on?
Yeah, I think that's ultimately going to be a council decision. I think all of the subcommittees will probably have some asks, and we're going to have to kind of sort through them. We probably ought to wait a little bit further though, you know, before we get to the, to the end of the collection to know exactly what we've got.
They'll get their thoughts together, then they'll make recommendations.
They are. As far as I know, they're all actively, I know most of them are, if not all of them, but they're all actively scheduling meetings and trying to lobby and, you know.
Right.
It's, it's a good problem to have.
Right.
But, you know, with sales tax collections where they are right now, I think, you know, it's probably prudent to wait a little bit longer before we start, you know, dividing it up.
Well, and we have a couple kinds of risks. We have a revenue risk, but each month that kind of goes away because we've only got 15 more months left of collections on it. So that, that kind of is, is going away, and we've obviously had good revenues on that. On the expenditure side, we still have the three largest projects to bid out. Modern Streetcar is out on the streets right now for bid. The, the North Park of the Central Park will be, will be bid out December, November, December will be out bid, I guess, in November, and then in '17 we'll be putting out the Convention Center. So once, you know, that's our greatest risk on the, on the expenditure side.
So the 42 million is all the contingency funds? I mean, all the contingency is in that 42 million?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a little bit of contingency in each project for change orders.
Okay.
On that, so the, each program, each, each project has some contingency funds all, but it's, it's not major, it's just, it's just.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, could I just talk briefly about item 7L? I thought that was the one Ed was going to talk about when he said L, so I, I didn't mention it, but this is the resolution that authorizes our annual submission to Housing and Urban Development for Continuum of Care projects, and I feel like I do this on a regular basis, but I just want to be sure that everybody knows how much federal dollars come to us and what agencies we support, and those include Be the Change for Supportive Housing, Red Rock Behavioral Health Services for Supportive Housing, City Care for Supporting Housing, Mental Health Association, the Homeless Alliance, Heartline, Hope Community Services, City Rescue Mission, Community Enhancement Corporation, and the Oklahoma City Metro Alliance. We are able to pass through those federal dollars on a regular basis, and I really wanted to specifically thank the Continuum of Care Committee. We have a volunteer committee that works really hard, that looks at every one of these applications. They rate all of the agencies. Jared on our staff collects all that data, and we, they are ranked by performance, and that is how we determine what those allocations are that we recommend to the committee, and Social Services Committee reviews all of those applications, and, but a tremendous amount of work goes into vetting the projects before they get to us, and so I wanted to express my thanks to the Continuum of Care Committee.
All right. We also have a budget amendment on item AJ, and Christian York is going to lead us through that item.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Today's item is the introduction to the first budget amendment for fiscal year 2017. It's pretty straightforward, but I'll just go through the pieces with you, and if there are any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer those. The first section is related to the purchase order rollover. This is our routine process where we identify purchase orders at the end of the fiscal year that, for a variety of reasons, just aren't able to be closed in time for that new fiscal year. And what we're doing here is identifying those and restoring the budget in the current fiscal year where we ended up paying for those four. It affects a variety of funds, to include the general fund of about a half million dollars. In total, it's about 2.5 million. I should point out that that general fund figure of 495,000 is significantly lower than we've seen in prior years, and I need to credit the Procurement Services Division for their work to streamline the process with the departments. We simply had less purchase orders to roll over this year. We also have an increase for the fire sales tax for $600,000 for roof repairs. I want to point out that there's a companion item making its way through the process as well, and you'll see that later today in, under Items for Individual Consideration for item 9I. We have an increase for the Stormwater Drainage Utility Fund in the amount of 600,000. This is related to some higher-than-expected costs for channel cleaning of our drainage canals throughout the city. And finally, in our Transportation and Parking Department, we have a movement of a couple of positions that are currently in the trust over to the City Cash Fund. During the budget development process for FY '17, the department expressed a preference that those positions be moved over, and this is just memorializing that into the budget. Although it appears to be a net increase to the city, as far as the department goes, it's a net zero because we're reducing two positions in the trust, increasing two positions in the City Cash Fund. So the Transit City side goes from 26 positions to 28, and the Transit Trust goes from 221 positions to 219. Overall, the entire amendment ends up being 3.9 million, with the total budget being 1.267 billion. Once again, this is the introduction. This item will come back in front of you on September 27th for a public hearing and hopefully your adoption. I just want to point out there's two attachments in your packet. The first is simply a summary of all the changes. The second, and attachment B, is actually the specific changes to the fund that we're asking you to review and adopt eventually. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right. Thanks, Christian. Item really just being introduced today, public hearing on September 27th. Any comments or questions from the council today? All right. Thanks. All right. Ready to vote the consent docket? Cast your votes. All right. We're on to the concurrence docket, just two items here. Comments or questions here? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We're on to item 9. These are items that require a separate vote. The first is a final hearing today. This item was introduced, I guess, a month or so ago. We've held a public hearing, and this has to do with our solid waste fees. Is there anybody here hoping to speak on this item today?
No items.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
It's my understanding they need the emergency to, in effect.
All right. All right. Francis hears that they were requesting the emergency on this item.
Move the item of the emergency.
All right. Cast your votes on the emergency. It passes unanimously. All right. Item 9B and 9C have to do with the Stockyards bid. Item 9B is a resolution that would adopt and confirm the assessment role for 2016 and '17, and this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on the Stockyard City Business Improvement District today?
I'm with the other.
All right. We have a motion and a second to adopt and confirm the assessment role on item 9B. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And then item 9C is the final hearing. This would set the assessment role for the upcoming year. Is there a motion?
No.
All right. Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Item 9D is a public hearing. This item was introduced a year ago and has to do with effects to our zoning and planning code. Did anyone show up today hoping to speak on item 9D, the public hearing regarding the zoning and planning code amendments? All right. Is there, we have a motion. Is there a second to move it on to a future meeting for a final vote? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously, so that item moves ahead. Item 9E is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9E?
No.
All right. How about a motion then to move these along?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9F is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9F? All right. How about a motion?
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. I do see for item, K-3501, Northeast 23rd, I do see Mr. Bowie here.
Good morning.
Good morning. I want to say you guys, the camera doesn't do you guys justice. I mean, you all look great. So I don't know if that'll get me anywhere, but.
Can't hurt.
Mick, you always look great. I haven't met you yet, but over the years I've seen you. We both age a little bit, but anyway, we've got, this property at Northeast 23rd, it's a high-growth area, but we've got a group of ghost hunters that keep coming in and taking boards off, and it's just, it's been tough for us. We love the property. It's five acres, right on 23rd, and there's a new church across the street and other things that's going on there. We've had high hopes for the sewer coming in, but this ghost hunter deal went viral, and we've had problems with that. We do need an electric drop there in order to keep it secure, because you can secure it, one day, two days later, they've taken the boards off again. So we're here, again, with the, with, with the board thing, but we always put it back, but it's just ongoing.
Yeah. So you felt like you've properly secured the building, but vandals are coming in and, and making it unsecured, and now the city's trying to deal with the issue. Charles, you have any opinions about this? Do we need to get the police more involved with, on the vandalism side?
That wouldn't hurt. It'd kind of be up to them to call the police.
Right.
On our securing, most of those boards you see on those are ours, not theirs. If they, if they secure it before, you know, before we go out there, of course, we release it.
What's your long-term plan?
We've got it for sale, and we've had some people talking to us about it. Couple people were trying to secure financing. If that doesn't happen, then we will get an architect and do some things with it, but we hope to enhance it to be, for that area, something positive. It was built by the Catholic Church in 1950, so it's not, in the scheme of things, a real old building. It's very solid. It's just the vandals. It was a retirement home for a Catholic priest, and we'd, we'd love to redo it. We're kind of hoping for the sewer, you know. But again, we don't want to upset that department, because this thing, I boarded it up three times this year, they boarded it up once, the police have been out, we get charged for that. We hired a security company. That's $1,000 a month, and people will try to dump a little bit. We get that immediately, and then we get the little spray things too, you know, so.
Okay. You feel like you're making a really good faith effort to do what you can. John, you have any opinions on this?
We're going to have to leave this on the agenda, but if you will continue to work with Charles and his department and continue to work with the police as well, and I believe we have a meeting soon with the alliance to talk about economic development, because this is in the Northeast Renaissance TIF area, so I look forward to getting that meeting scheduled.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for your diligence on this. All right. We already have a motion and a second. Is there anyone here hoping, else here hoping to speak under a item listed under 9F? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9G is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9G? All right. How about a motion? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9H is a public hearing regarding removal of properties from the abandoned building list. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on any of these items? All right. How about a motion? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9I is a public hearing. This item is just being introduced today.
Doug Dollar is here to highlight that for us.
All right. As you recall, during the budget process, we adopted resolutions for both police and fire sales tax funds. Basically, all the expenses out of those funds need to be expended in various categories or projects that are approved by the council, and the resolution sets limits on what can be spent there. As Christian mentioned earlier, the fire sales tax, the Fire Department is desiring to spend $600,000 additional on roof repairs, and so part of this resolution is to authorize that additional $600,000 for roof repairs. The other change that's on here is a relatively minor increase from $150,000 to $200,000 for advanced life support for the training that the Fire Department receives for paramedics. Basically, they have about $140,000 of that obligated, and they want to just make sure that they have the authority to spend a little bit more if additional people want to go through paramedic school, and this just gives them the authority to do that. They would take them funding from their contingency to author, to fund that expense. So relatively straightforward, but again, all expenses out of the fire and police sales tax need to have authorization from the council.
All right. This is a public hearing. Is anyone here hoping to speak on this item today? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9J revolves some incurrence of indebtedness with the Water Utilities Trust.
Mayor, this is a refunding for the Water Utilities Trust. It will cause a savings of about 10% or a net present value savings of $5.4 million on their Series 2009A bonds.
All right. Is there a motion on item 9J? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9K, I understand we do need executive session on this item?
Yes, sir.
All right. How about a motion to move that item into executive session? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9L is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9L? All right. How about a motion then to deny the claims? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 10 is items from council, National League of Cities coming up in Pittsburgh. Is there a motion to improve the travel expenses? Larry?
I have a question on this one. Friday, when the, I was reading newspaper and I saw what had happened as far as sales tax collections, I sent an email to, to Jim asking him, is it appropriate at this time to put a moratorium out on travel? And then this comes along here wanting a expenditure of $10,672 for us to travel, and I'm on the risk, so this affects me as well as some other people. And the question that I have in my mind is, is this what we want to do, spending $10,000 where we might, in a month or two, have to cut back some on the budget and find ourselves in a situation similar to another public entity in town that went on a trip to Boston in the throes of a very stringent financial condition? So I think we ought to just have some debate and figure out what, what our options are on this. It's why I'm speaking up.
Yeah. Well, I have an opinion on it. I, I think we ought to be diligent with all money right now, but I just think that the value that the four council people will get by attending the National League of Cities exceeds the cost. There's incredible sharing of information and ideas that could ultimately be a lot more valuable than, than the expenses that occurred. But I understand the concern, and we've done this before, so I'll, I'll follow the council's directions, but I'd like to see the council involved in the National League of Cities. I think it's a good idea.
Mayor.
Yeah. Pete?
I will just cast my vote by withdrawing my name from somebody going. So you reduce it by 25 percent.
Yeah, we're saving money already, Larry.
They'll be on the payroll.
So you just amend the, amend the motion to shut.
Well, I think if, yeah, if you don't go, I mean, it'll, it'll take care of itself. Any other comments or questions before we vote on the resolution?
I guess I just request if those going can, I mean, I think we need ideas and know what peer cities are doing in terms of revenue, and so I think we need to reach out and, and talk to other cities, and, because I do think we have a revenue problem. I don't think we can just cut our way out of decreased sales tax, and so I just, I think it is important, even though it is an expenditure, to reach out to other people and try and learn from other cities, and so I guess I just ask those that are going, I'm sure you will anyway, to engage in conversations about revenue strategies. Oklahoma's a unique state, and it's a unique situation, but I think it'll, I think we could make our money back if, if we learn. All right.
I do have a comment. I was kind of iffy about going, but one of the reasons I stopped going, I used to go both sessions, the congressional session in, in February and the, and this session. And what I found was that most of the conversation that goes on there is about how to get more money from the federal government. And in Oklahoma, it seems to me that as a representative of the people of Oklahoma who doesn't want money from the federal government, I mean, we don't take Medicare expansion, we, we complain about the source of the funds. I just, I, that made it easy for me to decide not to go, because, again, what I found was that most of the discussion has to do with how we get more money from the federal government, and they don't have it.
Yeah. For, you know, for, for less experienced council people, there's a tremendous amount of continuing education.
I think that's probably true.
I understand how you, you, you'd be teaching those classes instead of taking them, but...
But I enjoyed those classes. It had to do with how to be an effective councilman and how to work with other people on the horseshoe and how to work with difficult councilmen and all, and difficult constituents. Well, I mean, they have those classes, and they're good. They're very good. But in terms of the other classes, really, I mean, 75% of the conversation was, there's a government grant, or there ought to be a government grant, or don't cut CUBG, or something that had to do with the federal government funding and what we're doing. And I just, I found it a little bit disingenuous to, to, when I don't, when I think we ought to be doing what we, we ought to be doing it ourself and, and living within our own budget. be doing what we, we ought to be doing it ourself and living within our own budget. I just found it difficult to enjoy myself, unless there was, went to a town that had a Major League Baseball game.
Larry?
Yeah, I will give a unashamed commercial. The committee that I'm on, and John's also serves on the committee, have committee meetings up there. The committee that I'm on is the Fair Committee, which is involved in the sales tax initiative that's going on, and that's had some movement on it. And so there is a reason from a revenue standpoint, maybe for us to be represented there. So I'll take your suggestion and I will go on your.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, for me, it's, and I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, in reference to what a great learning experience it is for new, new council members to attend. It was at NLC where I learned the importance of creating TIF districts in underserved areas. And so the whole idea of the Northeast Renaissance, that actually came from attending the National League of Cities Black Electoral Official Conference in Milwaukee shortly after I got elected. So for me, it's been a great learning experience and I think Ward Seven has, in the city, has stood the benefit.
Ed?
I just thought of two other things that I would hope that you guys could explore there. One is what Larry's bringing up with the sales tax. And maybe, I have, I'm curious, at what point, when you increase the sales tax, how much are you driving to online purchasing? So as we face question 779 and, at what point, when you get a sales tax of 10%, 11%, at what point, and then just everything that we can learn about the Main Street Fairness Act. And then the second is, if sales tax is going to be increased through a petition or whatever, what are other cities? We do have the ability, and I guess we as a council will have an opportunity to look at, do we increase the property tax for our bond? I know, like Dallas, for example, has three times the property tax we do. They don't have the income tax, obviously, but, but maybe exploring, because that seems like a policy question we have to make in the next year, is do we increase property tax for our GO bond and what impact that would have?
All right, is there a motion on item 10A? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 10B is an item from several council members that would continue the every other week council schedule through April of next year. Is there comments or discussion here? Yeah, Larry?
Yeah, I just have a question for Jim. Jim, as we look at this, what impact will this have, A, on efficiency of the staff as far as servicing the every other week council meeting? And B, will it have any negative effect on our citizens who may have a need for business on a weekly basis?
As far as it affects staff, it always advantage staff because of the fact that we have one more morning freaked up every other, other week. I think the downside is it does affect citizens' ability to get things done, whether it's zoning case that, you know, you push one week is one thing, but now you're pushing it in two weeks and something happens, it'll be a month. So we do have some concern occasionally from citizens that it takes a little bit longer to get things through. You know, an example would be last month, the planning commission didn't have a forum. So then their stuff got pushed back two weeks, then there was another two weeks before I got the council. So, you know, there's a month that's lost and something along those lines. So I think that's, if there is a downside, and that doesn't happen often, doesn't happen often, but it happens occasionally, that's, that's the downside to it, is that occasionally a citizen will be inconvenienced.
Well, we could monitor it this year and see how many times, if ever, that occurs.
Absolutely.
And then kind of give us some guidance going forward.
It may be an opportunity to revisit our conversation about the emergency and some of these things that specifically were delayed because of our timing. We have that mechanism.
Okay. Is there a motion then on item 10B? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 10C is a resolution introduced again by several council members urging the voters in Oklahoma City, well, it's expressing our opinion that it would be, have negative consequences to the city of Oklahoma City. And this is state question 777, also known as Right to Farm. Is there a motion from council?
Move approval.
All right.
I'd like to discuss it just a little bit, why we did, why we're doing this. Is that we, actually, why we did it the way we did it the first time was on the advice of the municipal councillor. His view at that time was that we could only present the facts and not take a position on it. But I think further research has indicated that he's now comfortable with us doing it this way. He's not comfortable with us doing it on the, on 779 because there is specific legislation that says that you cannot spend, expend any funds on an initiative. So since 779 was an initiative, it's different than this one. And what, and I said in the paper that I thought it was illegal. Actually, I don't think it is illegal, but I think that he thinks it's illegal. And since he's my lawyer, I'm going to do what he says. But my personal opinion is it's such a, I don't believe it was, I think it was designed, and the intent of it was, to prevent cities from putting money into it, from actually operating campaigns. I think that's the reason. But the language, if construed by someone very, very narrowly, could, could come to the conclusion that it is a violation because we'd be spending money printing, printing it on the, on the page. I mean, there's an ink cost, I guess, or there's a paper cost if it extends the size of the agenda by one page, so.
Television and also staff time and preparing.
Right. And so all those things, I think, could be in a very narrow construction of it could apply to 779, which I oppose. I think it's a terrible thing, but I don't think I can ask that the council take a formal position on it.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure that's clear. I was quoting in the paper as saying it's illegal, and that's, I probably said that, but that's not what I meant.
Okay.
What I meant was that I think that the city attorney believes it is very risky, very difficult to defend it if we did it. And so, I know I'm parsing words, but that's what lawyers do.
Okay.
So Pete, to flip that around.
Yes, the penalty is forfeiture of office, so it's certainly a high-risk deal to say that I'd be willing to do it. And I certainly wouldn't ask anybody else.
All right, Larry?
I just wanted, I'm going to vote against it and I just, this, and I just want everybody to know why, not because of the issue itself, but because of the process. I had the opportunity last week to sit down with one of the sides of this argument. Both sides are very, very passionate and both presented some things which maybe needed some clarification, which just muddled my mind. But we did pass last week, I think, two weeks ago, it said that we encouraged all our citizens to research this and to find out what the, what the real issues were. And Channel Nine, for example, tomorrow night is having a special on the 10 o'clock news, Right to Harm or Right to Farms. That just kind of shows you the emotion of this thing. That's an opportunity for our citizens to find out what's going on. A number of organizations around town are planning both sides to come in for a debate, and I encourage that, but I don't think it's, I don't feel it's the role of this council as media councilmen to tell the citizens what they should or should not vote on. So I'm going to vote no for that reason right there. Thank you, Your Honor.
Yeah.
I agree with what Larry just said. I mean, me personally, I'm going to vote no on state question 777 because I think it will hinder, the main reason is for zoning. And I think that if we want to come up with new zoning or update our zoning laws, I think that this will be a hindrance to us being able to do that. But I think that citizens should come to that conclusion on their, on their own without me telling them that that's how they should vote. I certainly prefer what the resolution we passed two weeks ago.
Okay. Any other comments or questions before we vote?
Mayor, I was just going to say, to kind of flip Pete's comments, the reason I think we're comfortable in this resolution is that it came to us from the legislature. This is not an initiative position, it's something that was brought forward by the state legislature. And in my opinion, you know, once again, is the state overstepping their bounds and tying municipalities' hands in what we can and can't do. So that's the reason I'm supportive of voting, voting for this resolution.
Which, yeah, which is against the passage. Yeah.
The one thing I'd say about the resolution is that I think it's important for the citizens of Oklahoma City to be able to hear from several different sources on this state question 777. You can look to Google, you can look to some of the nonprofits that are advocating positions on this, but I think it's important to hear from our council members too. And I personally am a staunch advocate for water rights and protecting our water rights in Oklahoma City. And I think this council has done a wonderful job dating back to the 50s in protecting our water rights. And at the end of the day, looking at state question 777, my concern is, it's wordy, it's less than clear in my mind. Secondly, it's a very, very strict standard, it's called strict scrutiny, and it makes it very hard for us to do something if our, if our water rights are being eroded, if our water rights are being polluted. And so in this instance, to protect our water rights in Oklahoma City, I'm going to be against state question 777.
Thanks, Mark. All right, ready to vote? All right, cast your votes. And it passes six to two. All right, puts a, oh, it's item shown, council continue on. James, do you have anything else? Ed? All right, Larry? Pete?
I, I found out this week that my friend and longtime city employee and Riverfront Redevelopment Director Pat Downs had a stroke. And I know he's, he is in a medically induced coma, I think, at this point. And I just wanted to have everybody to know that and have your thoughts, be with him and his family. He's, he's been a great leader for the river for many, 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 many years. And I just, I just want to bring that up. Good guy and has done a great job for Oklahoma City and I just hope everything goes well for him and his family.
All right, Meg?
Wait, wait, I had a.
Okay.
Are you kidding me? It's only, it's only 10 o'clock, hell, I probably got another hours worth of stuff to talk about. No, I do have a couple more things. One is Preservation Oklahoma's Traveling Exhibit on Endangered Places is located on the second floor. It's only going to be here for two weeks. It travels around the state showing different buildings, different sites that are in danger of, of being coming dilapidated to the point that they're, will be gone and encourages people to take a look at them. And we've asked them to, for us to be one of the locations. They opened it up, I think, yesterday and it'll be here for a couple of weeks. So I'd invite everybody down there to just take a look at it. The third thing is, I had a complaint this week from a, the complaint came on Monday from a noise complaint for a festival that was held at Plaza Maure. They had music outside and this guy complained, complained. Of course, he complained on Monday and there's no noise on Monday. So it's very difficult to say, to do anything. You can't do anything about it at all. And I asked him, I said, it's Myers name that you can call the police and they have, they have a process where they can test the sound. And he said he tried that and it didn't work. So what I'd like to know is, and he was, he was understanding that he can't call anybody on Monday about a noise that happened on Sunday and get any relief from that. But I would like to know if there is a process and if there's not, we need to implement one where somebody could, because these events occur on Friday nights, Saturdays, Saturday nights and Sundays. They don't usually occur Tuesday night or something, they occur on weekends. There ought to be a way or a number that a citizen can call, somebody come out with a noise meter and check the noise and determine whether or not it was too loud. It's been my experience that all these guys that wrote these things, if you go to them and say you're too loud, they'll turn it down. They'll turn the sound down. So I think it's, well.
This isn't the first time we've had a complaint.
No, no, it's not.
Of the weekend. I bet there's a, in the back room, there's a representative of the police department.
Okay.
And they do regularly respond to those and I think, you know, they generally ask people to turn it down and they generally do. But let's have somebody from the police department come in and talk about their process.
I just, there ought to be a process where a person, a citizen can just pick up the phone, call somebody, somebody would either come to their house or come to the site, find out if it's too loud and if it is, do something about it.
Larry?
I forgot one, one thing, Mayor. In yesterday's paper in the editorial section was a very interesting editorial entitled, Policies to Curb Housing Sprawl Can Take Toll on Working Families. And I just encourage anyone involved in zoning and planning to take a look at that and see because there may be some unintended consequences by the actions that we're taking. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Cindy?
Well, Mayor, not from the police department, but I helped work on redrafting that chapter on the noise violations, so I thought I'd just give a little explanation, councilman. The noise meter is usually only used by code enforcement officers for stationary noises, but for things like events and festivals and outdoor music and things like that, what we've done is we've created a distance requirement so an officer, a police officer can easily drive so far away or walk so far away from the source of the noise and see if the noise is exceeding that distance. Also, folks who are having festivals should come see about getting a permit. And then code enforcement and police, whoever needs to be involved based on what's going on, will go out beforehand and examine the location and that sort of thing. And if there are residential properties nearby, they can restrict the noise to a lesser distance. I'm kind of being vague about the distance because I don't remember exactly what it is.
Chief Coleman's here and might be able to respond to a little bit. Chief, if you get a call on 10 o'clock on Saturday night that the festival's making too much noise, what are your procedures?
Once again, a lot of it depends on what the permit allows and then an officer can always go out to the call and make a judgment and look at the permit, determine what the noise factor is.
Assuming they have a permit.
Assuming they do. And then a lot of it's a discretion call once they get there based on what the ordinance says. You know, each situation can be different on what it is.
But if there is a disturbance, the answer is to call the police department and they will respond?
Absolutely, we will respond, absolutely. Every call will make a decision and, you know, the officer will have to make a decision based on what's going on at the time.
Okay. But in this particular situation, they had a permit, it was on the agenda a couple, three weeks ago. The caller owned a house, and we know where Plaza Maure is, and it was, this guy owned a house about six blocks north of there and a half a mile west of there, on the other side of I-35. And he said he could hear it. Now whether, the fact he could hear it doesn't mean it's in violation. I mean, it has to be, he has to hear it at a certain noise level. But does the police have a device of some kind that could test the noise?
I don't believe we do.
It's a judgment?
It's a judgment call based on what the permit allows, what time it is and the factors of the call.
Okay.
But we will respond to any call regarding loud noise and talk to the citizen and make a decision.
And he just should call 911?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
You know, I had just two quick things. First, I wanted to thank Cox Communications for working with our staff to develop a really wonderful animated PSA about the Curbside Chronicle and efforts to get people back into housing. It's running on lots of local TV stations. It's really a wonderful project. Our staff is working on a companion piece that ought to also hit the airwaves very shortly, but we, we've been working for a long, long time to try to help brand the vendors for the Curbside Chronicle and separate that from, you know, folks that perhaps can handle it as a business. And so we're working at identifying this green vest concept, a little bit like the Red Kettle. And Cox has done a great job to help us with that, so I very much appreciate it. And I also wanted to congratulate all of the volunteers that put Mesta Festa on. We couldn't have had a more beautiful Saturday than we had for all the street festivals that were happening around town, but there was a giant crowd in Pearl Mesa Park and lots of activities for the kids, food trucks, and it was just a wonderful event and they did a great job.
All right, John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, I share the same comments as Councilman White as relates to Pat, Pat Downs. I believe he was here down, in downtown on Friday. I saw him at a distance getting out of his car and who would ever have thought the next day he had a stroke. So definitely present with him and his family. Also, I just want to give a special thanks to the fire department this past weekend. They did a 5K walking run and the money that they raised went to, went to the smoke alarm detector program that the fire department runs where the fire department gives out free fire detectors, smoke detectors. And so again, I just want to thank them for doing that. And also, I do share concerns about noise as it relates to concerts and festivals. Here recently, we've been receiving a lot of calls as it relates to Lost Lakes, which is off of Northeast 10th Street. So I definitely share some of those concerns. And also, I share the concerns because I stay within walking distance of the Zoo Empath Theater. So every time there is a concert at the Zoo Empath Theater, I have a free chance to hear it from my house. So, but I do understand sometimes citizens' concerns as it relates to loud noise and music. Thank you.
I think, Your Honor.
Okay. City manager reports.
Mayor, we give periodic updates on the council priorities and we have several we're going to do this morning. Are you going to introduce them? We're going to start right with Eric. We're going to start right with Eric Winger to talk about transportation.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to present this morning. And as we talk about these different updates, you do have different directors are going to be presenting different pieces of this. So as I present first, we're going to be talking specifically about developing a transportation system that works for all citizens. And so as we kick this off, there are actually three priority indicators for city council that public works more or less has a direct response to. And you'll see those here. The percent of citizens satisfied with the condition of city streets, the number of miles of trails and sidewalks constructed, and of course, our average commute time. One of the things that I'll draw to our attention, of course, we've received the citizen survey just a couple of weeks ago. And as we talk about the percent of citizens satisfied with the condition of city streets, you're going to see the next several slides really work to address that, one, as a concern, but then also as some of the solutions that we continue to strive for. This is from that citizen survey and I've included the last three years of data. See, we're going back to 2014. The ones that you see in green are the major streets and the ones that you see in blue are our neighborhood streets. And the citizen survey did separate the two. So we are getting data specific to those two, but you'll see that they are continuing to trend downward. This is obviously not a metric that we're wanting to see. We were expecting this to be increasing. But again, it's, it's an average. The one thing that we are starting to focus on is we are seeing that there is a neighborhood street reduction along with the arterials. We're starting to try to find out from that citizen survey which area is more of interest. We are starting to balance out the amount of work that we're starting to do, not just on city arterial streets, but the work that we're also starting to do in neighborhoods as well. So one of the ways that we track our street condition, and I know that we've mentioned this before, it's the PCI index, the pavement condition index. And I'm going back five years here. The 70 has been drawn to show that we have set an internal goal of trying to get our average up to a 70. Just five short years ago, we were at a 61. And you'll see, we've steadily increased about a point every year. And this should happen. We've been spending on average about $50 million a year on street improvements. And so we would expect this number to go up. But I think the concern is, is our citizen satisfaction continues to go down. And so it is a little bit confusing. We think some of the factors could be just the inconveniences due to construction. Some of the other factors could be the timing of the survey and just different things that might occur, maybe not directly related to the city, but things that could occur in other areas as well. But I show you this slide is that we are actually improving the overall average condition of streets. We have recently also started improving the way we collect the data. And this is a PCI map of the city of Oklahoma City. So this shows most of the streets. And all of this is tracking, the streets that are in red are generally in average or below average condition. The ones in yellow are ones that are in need of repair and the ones that are in green are in good or very serviceable repair. We track all city streets in Oklahoma City. We track all the arterials, we track all of the residential. And we're actually now upgrading our data collection. We're using a laser radar type device for the collection of data on our arterial streets. We have actually just in this summer are procuring a device that's truck mounted that's going to allow us to then collect data more regularly on our residential streets. The reason this is important is this is how we're prioritizing our projects. And so as we go out, you're going to look at, a lot of the streets are related to the density of our population. We're trying to focus on the streets that are driven the most or in the worst condition. It doesn't mean that we don't work on streets that are in average condition. We have other programs like our thin lay or our micro resurfacing programs that are to keep our good streets good. But we're also planning for those projects where we've got those street replacements, much which is tied to our bond issues and the current bond issue for 2007. When we look at the miles of street improvements, we can talk about the increase in cost, but we're also increasing the number of miles of work that we're doing every year. So one of the things that we started trending just a couple of years ago, when we do a widening project, it's a multimillion dollar project, it obviously only improves a few lane miles at a time. But when we're able to resurface streets, we can improve a greater number of streets and street miles and the impact to our citizens. That's what you're starting to see here is we're moving and completing a lot of the widening projects and the 2007 bond issue to address traffic needs. We're now able to focus more on residential and arterial resurfacing projects. And that's what you're starting to see here in this graph, the number of miles and then, of course, the number of dollars that are starting to increase as well. We've included on here the fiscal year 2017, so this would take us through June 30 of next year. We're projected to expend more than $50 million this fiscal year just on streets alone. And the way that that breaks down now is that we have about $25 million that's going to go towards residential resurfacing, about $17 million in widening. And that's been more of a factor in the past. We've had a lot more widening projects. We have about $3 million in streetscapes and then we have about $11 million in arterial resurfacing. So the resurfacing goals have increased, the amount of available funds has increased. And this is also attributable to the recent $8 million that council provided for fund balanced resurfacing projects. And so that's included in what you see for fiscal year 2017. So in addition to streets, and as I kind of close out the streets argument, we do understand from the citizen survey that streets remain a number one priority for Oklahoma City. And we're absolutely doing all we can with the resources, with the financial resources, with the planning resources to make sure that we're making the biggest impact possible. We'll be planning the next bond issue and taking a lot of citizen input in those areas. But in addition to vehicular traffic, we've also got to focus, council focus, on trails and sidewalks constructed. You're going to see those totals continuing to increase as well that you see on this graph. Now I've put up the projected fiscal year 2017 totals and you'll see that there's not a lot of trails projected, although there are some current MAPS projects that are underway. But we are continuing to implement bond issue sidewalks, MAPS III sidewalks and general fund sidewalks in this upcoming year. Just in the bond issue alone, there's about 275 miles of sidewalk just in the 2007 bond issue. When we look at the location of those sidewalks, you'll find those on this drawing to kind of give you just a reference to some of the colors. Those that are yellow on most of the major city streets, those are from the bond issue. The ones that you see on the major city streets that are in blue are the MAPS sidewalks. And then the ones that you see with the blue boxes, those are actually the bond issue residential sidewalks that are included with the residential resurfacing projects. We do get grant funds from time to time and that's what makes up some of the other colors. So it's not just limited to those three programs. But again, you can see that we're expanding the sidewalk system citywide and working very closely with MAPS and planning to help make that even more so possibly in this next bond issue as well. This last slide and the last metric that we measured was the commute time for Oklahoma City. This is a measure that we're able to receive. You're going to see that it's relatively unchanged. We maybe have gone up a tenth each year, but generally speaking, the average commute time in Oklahoma City is 20 minutes. And one of the things that we're able to do is we can say that we're maintaining a very good commute time. We've recently finished the intelligent traffic control system. Oklahoma City continues to grow, the population is growing, but at the same time, we're actually able to hold that 20-minute commute time. And again, we've received very few complaints except for some times that we have construction on inconveniences. There's quite a few of those around town today. But again, as we look as a whole, the commute time is, has been very good in Oklahoma City. And it's something that I think as we look towards the future, having now completed the ITS projects, we're able to now manage that system and manage Oklahoma City traffic much better than we have in the past. So with that, those are the updates that I have for you this morning.
But you want to go back to that last slide there if you could? I'll just point out, that 20.5, if that's not the national leader, it were like second, we're either first, second, or maybe third on that list. Even though we're getting higher, we're moving up, improving on the, on the list. Other cities are, their traffic congestion is increasing at a much higher rate of speed. So it may not, it may not be perfect, but it's better than everywhere else. I think that's, that's the best thing you can say about traffic in Oklahoma City.
The bulk of the geo-bond will be for streets. I think in 2007, it was $500 million. I guess I have some concern that we're falling behind in getting that public input that you talked about. We've had a couple of town hall meetings in Ward II. We said repeatedly that we were going to have public input meetings in August and we didn't, we didn't have those unfortunately. And now it's September and I haven't heard of any that are planned. So do we have, do we have a rough outline of, with PCI indexes? And do we have a rough outline of, a rough, rough draft of what projects we might put in the next bond that the public can start to look over, we as policymakers can start to look over?
Well, we're working on that. And Eric has reached out to all departments and some of the Sunday group four to try to get that information in and we're doing that. I would anticipate, we're going to do a strategic planning workshop with council in a couple of weeks. And then I would anticipate sometime after that, we'll do another workshop to talk about geo-bonds, potential sales tax expansion.
What about public meetings?
I'm sure that we'll have, we'll have public meetings all, you know, as we go on.
But we would wait till after the workshops now or?
I don't, I don't know if we, I mean, we don't have the list together. You know, you ask, somebody asked maybe you, if you wish to put together a list and we're working on it. It's just that's a, and it's time to do it, but it's a pretty, pretty significant task as we're putting it together.
Okay. So I guess those are two different questions. One's the list, which you just answered. The other is the public input.
What I can share with you is that we have several of the department directors that include myself, Aubrey Hammond Tree, Craig Freeman, Doug Dowler, and others, Chris Yeager on the PIM side, working very closely together. And so strategically, yes, we have sometimes weekly meetings as we plan the public out process, but it's still being worked. I mean, it's in multiple categories. So there are workshops, there's neighborhood meetings, there's another concept of a meeting in a box. There's some things that we're doing for online planning, but all of it's being coordinated so that it can go out as one complete unit. If we made a commitment for August and we missed that, you know, our commitment has always been that this fall is the time that we want to get out to the public and make sure that we exercise that all the way through the winter. Because as we come into next spring, we are going to have to finalize that list and have that ready for you and the council to consider for that vote that would theoretically occur late next year. So the planning is ongoing and it is something that we're working very, very diligently on to get ready for the public.
So the, the goal is still to have the finalized list of projects in the spring, about six months from now?
The sooner the better, but yes, that's generally the schedule is to have that finalized early next year so that there's plenty of time to have council respond and make decisions.
We're looking for an election date in September, middle of September. And to accommodate that, we'd have to call for reelection of July.
Okay.
We've done these in the past. We're going to try to get this out early and get information. There always seems to be a lot of last minute changes as we go forward, but we will try to get it out as quickly as possible.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
The new intelligent traffic control system, can you tell us a little bit about the implementation of that system and how that in the future will help the flow of traffic in Oklahoma City?
Sure. So it's probably easier to address. What the system was before is that the 750 signalized intersections, they used to individually respond to the intersection. So they weren't connected, they weren't dynamic, they were static, they worked just on that particular intersection. What the ITS or the intelligent traffic control system gives us, the flexibility to communicate with all 750, we can link them, they're able to do certain communications together. So when we coordinate systems, as a part of ITS, there were 18 new commuting corridors that were outlined and put into place, one of those being Classen from Northwest Expressway to downtown. We've been able to shave time off of that commuting corridor, both in the AM and in the PM. And so we're able to now expand that more system wide. We're now completing that project. And so there's different software components, there's different things that the staff are coming into that we can hopefully exercise in all areas of the city. So when we identify an area that's not performing as well, the system allows us to analyze it faster. It lets us make more changes than the older system used to make. And then again, it's, it's, it's not just programmable, but it's upgradable. So as new modules and features and things come out in the future, we're able to adopt those as other cities are as well.
I think with the construction on the Broadway extension that's for the next few, few years, it's going to be important for us to find alternative, alternative routes to get downtown for such things as basketball games and other events. And so hopefully that, I come down to Classen on Tuesday mornings and the flow of traffic is excellent. And I hope we can expand that to other streets, north, south, heading downtown.
So we do have to focus on priorities in traffic, just like we do on streets. We're not able to do the whole city at once. But as we do identify those key areas, we'll study those, we'll improve them and we'll move to the next priority. So, but that is something we're able to do more efficiently now than we could before.
Okay. We have several more LFR reports to hear, so I want to try and move this along.
I just, I just have a real short comment. I want to compliment the city staff that builds, that does roads. There was about a quarter of a mile road that accessed a boat dock at Draper that I had been complaining about for a long time, that would pave part of it, didn't pave the rest of it. The entrance wasn't paved, so if it rained, you couldn't get to the boat dock. And we did it with city people, didn't contract it out. Is that, is that right?
Yes.
Great job. I mean, quick. I mean, it was, in fact, it was such a good job and it happened so fast, I'd like to see us look at doing that more often as opposed to contracting all of it out. Because I've got, I've got a road right now that's been under contract for like two years and it's only about half finished. And I just want to compliment the city staff with the way they operated that and how quickly and well they did it.
Appreciate the comments. Thank you.
All right. Next.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Chip Nolan. I'm an associate planner with Embark. Here to talk about how what we do on a day-to-day basis supports, aligns to what the city council esteemed their priorities, specifically to develop a transportation system that works for all citizens. The three priority indicators we'll be looking at today are ridership, total number of bus service hours, and average frequency during peak hours. The first indicator we'll look at is ridership. The main, the main way we do that is through riders per service hour. It's the most efficient and effective way we look at our ridership because the total number of service hours we provide is liable to change on a year-to-year basis. So this gives us a good way to compare ourselves year over year. We're focusing on our weekday service here because that's where we provide the bulk of our services and where we've made most of our investments in the last couple of years. As you can see, the orange line stretching across is our target riders per service hour for FY '16 at 18.5. Our actual riders per service hour is the blue line. As you can see, we were, did not achieve our goal. We declined slightly to 17.39 for FY '16, declining from 17.8 in FY '15. That's primarily due to introducing new service and adding new service hours the last couple of years. That tends to put downward pressure on your riders per service hour as you introduce new service. To give you a sense of the total number of passenger trips that go along with those riders per service hour, we've got our average passenger trips per day in the red column. As you can see, in FY '16, we provided 11,418 passenger trips per day. That's a 3% increase from FY '15 and a 12% increase from FY '14. The next indicator we'll look at is total number of service hours provided. As you can see again in the blue line, we saw a 2% decline riders per service hour from FY '15 and a 3% decline from FY '14. But we consider the very minimal decline, especially when you look at our total number of service hours provided, has gone up 6% since FY '15 and 17% since FY '14. And a lot of those service hours are our new night service where our riders per service hour is typically lower than it is during the day. Finally, we'll look at our frequency. As you can see, I've got FY '13 on there, which is our frequency before our service enhancements, that our off-peak frequency for FY '13 was as high as 53 minutes and then our peak frequency was just under 43 minutes. And then after our service enhancements, that improved to just under 36 minutes. And then after improvements to routes eight and 11, our frequency improved to just under 35 minutes. And that's where it's been since FY '15. And I know that was sort of brief, but our director, Jason, couldn't be here today to present, but I'll be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Can you, can you talk about, I think Embark recently won an award?
Yes. So that's why our—
That's why Chip's here today. Because David and most of the senior leadership at Embark is out accepting awards.
They are at, they're attending the American Public Transportation Association Conference in Los Angeles, accepting the 2016 Outstanding Transit System Award in the category of transit systems that provide fewer than 4 million transit trips. It's a very prestigious award. There's both qualitative and quantitative components to that application and we're very honored to receive that award and it's just a testament from, to the support we've received from, from city council.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah.
Doug Cupper's next.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Our particular pillar of the city is the enhancing recreation opportunities and community wellness. And our mission that we follow that you all put together is we are committed to providing quality recreational opportunities, communicating more effectively with our public about the options available to them, and working with partners to promote healthy living. And to those ends, our primary indicators are percentage of citizens reporting regular leisure time and physical activity, percentage of citizens within a half-mile of some park recreation or trail amenity, percentage of citizens satisfied with the maintenance of our parks, and of course, percentage of citizens that report using an Oklahoma City park or attaining a park program more than 10 times a year. We're trying to follow in the lines of the CDC. The CDC is recommending that our citizens get more active activities, and right now, 67% of our citizens are participating in a leisure time physical activity. Our goal is 70%. We have expanded our opportunities that we're offering our citizens, and we're seeing a marked improvement over participants in our programs throughout the year. Recreation Division headed up by Chris Hamilton has created a great deal of new dynamic activities at our rec centers. I do want to point out that prior to 16, 17 budget year, we were counting participants multiple ways. One individual, say a child that was participating in our summer activity programs, our playground programs, that child coming five different times during that week-long program was counted five times. So you had 100 kids, it added up to 500, but really, we only had 100 participants. So we've changed the way we're looking at our participants in those programs, and that's why you see in athletics, a marked drop in numbers. It's not necessarily a marked drop in participants, but how we were counting them prior to that. But again, we think we're maintaining the status quo. We had a bit of a dip in our seniors. Obviously, we're going to be real attentive to what happens when the new city-county health...or the new MAPS senior health facility opens up on Rockwell. We've got to make sure we get with them, get their numbers, so that if our numbers fall off at Woodson or at Will Rogers, we can correlate that to the increased uses at the new MAPS facility. Our partners, again, it's...we've created a very strong relationship with a lot of groups, and these are just a few to mention that we have ongoing relationships with, provide recreational opportunities to get our people out and operating. One of the big ones that is not listed up there is the North OKC Soccer Organization. Huge, I think they have 3,000 participants in their program. So again, just a few of them, some of our heavy users that utilize our real estate as well as their own properties for programming. We want to make sure that we're supporting a high quality of public education and community health and wellness. Again, 57% right now, 57.4% of our population lives within a half-mile of our recreation facilities. We see this number going up as you, the city council, have approved the impact fees and the relationship that we're going to develop with developers and promoting neighborhood parks. We're going to start counting those as public assets, although, you know, they're usually just for that neighborhood, but that means that we don't have to necessarily duplicate it, so we...but we should be able to start counting those neighborhood parks that are created through the impact fear or the exception that they get for creating those spaces. But we're enthusiastic about this number going up, and as you mentioned, the GO bond, we've got plans for new parks in the GO bond coming up. And through your support and the citizens' support by voting for those, I think we'll see a marked increase for those numbers. Enhance the recreation opportunities. We're exceeding our targets, we have to reevaluate that again. We'll be working with city council and other members to reset our target, but as I said, both Chris Hamilton and Scott Copeland, their staff have been very dynamic in creating new opportunities to get our people involved in recreational activities, whether it's a nature program out at Martin Park Nature Center, a gardening class at Will Rogers, or new classes at our 11 rec centers. We're really enthusiastic about it, and you can see our new guides. They've been instrumental in getting the word out about the new products that we have available for our citizens. Again, we had a 21% in 2015, we're up to 32.6, so another big increase for us from parks and recreation. Again, the enhancement of programs, we've got an archery program now at a number of our facilities. Our golf partners, the Golf Commission and the Golf Pros from the Golf System have helped us get into the SAG program, which is a golf program where we can teach kids the fundamentals of golf in our rec center, gymnasiums and places like that. And we're now with our partners from the Boathouse District, adding more opportunities out at Overhoser and Lake Hefner. We're excited about the water activities that people...and then, of course, the MAPS Trail System has exceeded our expectations for users of the West Trail. Again, it's a matter of just changing 10 minutes of your personal day. You do something, at least 10 minutes every day that is a physical activity, you are a healthier person. So if we can get people just to participate, just something in their parks on a daily basis for 10 minutes, we're going to have a healthier community. Again, enhancing recreational opportunities, satisfied with the way our parks are maintained. We've gone up this past year, we're at 71% success rate. That was very pointed out when we had the consultants here that went over the survey. We're excited about the fact that even though we did take a 5.5% cut this year, we were able to maintain our every two-week rotation for mowing. I think that's showed a marked improvement, and the neighborhoods are seeing it, and citizens are responding to that. Again, physical activity, doing something. And as we add walking paths in a lot of our parks, the number one item that our citizens asked for was walking paths. We're adding a number of walking paths throughout the year, new playgrounds. So again, we're making it available for our citizens to do one different thing every day in their lives. We've had a success rate in our 2007 general obligation bonds. We're getting out there and getting projects completed. 84% of our funds that we've received since through 2015 have been expended. Our community partners have invested 2.3 million in efforts on our behalf at our parks and recreation facilities. And then, again, we continue to mow over 5,100 acres. Some of the GO bond projects, Pearl Mesta, we've changed the grade at Pearl Mesta to make it more ADA accessible, again, improving the trail system there. Swatuck Park got a new trail system, also ADA compliant. Some of the other ones, Edgemere and Progressive all got new park walkways and trails. Metal Brook and Dolphin Wharton and Cornet Park and Zach Taylor, they all got new assets this past year, again, new walkways and new playgrounds. Harden Park, again, a nice seating area so that parents can watch their kids exercise or they can get some exercise while their kids sit and watch them exercise. One of the best things that we had going for us this past year was the opening of Wyndham Wizard Hunt Sports Complex. Not only are we increasing the number of soccer participants annually, our partnership with PAL has exceeded our expectations, but a lot of the high school baseball teams decide to play their games at the baseball stadium at Wyndham Wizard Hunt. So we're broadening our opportunities and our partnerships with the school district. And again, existing parks and trails, we work periodic...or we work with public works so that we know where their sidewalks are going in, make sure that we have connectivity so that we tie in our planning for our internal walkways tie into the sidewalks that are being created. So we want to make sure that we continue, and we've got 64 projects yet to be started. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Make for Doug.
Mayor, I just wanted to briefly say and thank Doug. There are some concerned citizens in Northwest Oklahoma City that are looking at expansion and relocation of soccer fields as the popularity of youth soccer grows, and so Doug and his staff have been quite helpful in trying to help us come up with some ideas on expansion and relocation. The group's looking for approximately, how many acres?
Between 80 and 100 acres.
Yeah, so if there's anybody that wants to donate some land, 80 to 100 acres, that would be greatly appreciated. We'd give them a lifetime pass. Thank you all.
All right, thanks Doug.
Next is education. Debbie Martin is here.
Mayor and Council, I'll be presenting this morning the council priority...sorry, of supporting and high-quality public education. In November of 2014, the city council met and adopted again a council priority regarding public education. Public education that produces graduates who are prepared for future success provides a foundation for a strong community. We must encourage accountability in public education and find new ways to partner with open the city public schools, other school districts, businesses, community groups to improve educational outcomes. There are four priority indicators for this particular priority. One is the percentage of third grades, third-grade students reading at or above level, graduation rates, number of students requiring remedial classes, and the average ACT. I would like to, because I think most of you know that the school district went through a very comprehensive program last year, and the great conversation that ultimately became the great commitment. So as I give you this information, I will tell you, having attended yesterday morning to revisit those particular criteria and reestablish some of those goals for the school, I would anticipate we're going to see some major changes of this over the next four years. But the first of these is a third-grade reading comprehension. And this particular chart, all of the information comes from the State Department of Education. So the major school districts that we're being compared with are Edmund, Middale, Moore, Mustang, Putnam City, Western Heights, and Yukon. And as you can see currently, it's 49.1%. For the other districts, it's 68.9. Some of the major initiatives that are going to be undertaken, we have not and they have not actually been assessing the students in the first and the second and third grade other than through the state testing. So one of the major initiatives is going to be individual assessment to test the growth of those students throughout the year so that they can make changes and develop individual programs for those students. The other thing that's gone is gone from the textbook criteria or our curriculum guide, they're going to level readers. So children will be reading at the level that they are supposed to be at. The other exciting kind of interesting thing is the Mylan Reader Program. Students can, on electronic device, take home 20 books, and it would be based on a focus area of their interest as well as their level of reading. So they're hoping that not only in the classroom, but certainly in terms of individual reading at home, because that's something Councilman White and I had some rather strange experiences with these students at one of the schools, because many of the children have no books at home. By 2019 to 2020, they hope that that rate will be at 67%. The next is graduation rates. And for major school districts in 2014, this is the last data we had available. It was 82.5, and for Oklahoma City, it was 72.8. There are several initiatives that they are undertaking, and I was sharing with Councilman Stone Cypher this morning. I was amazed, because I met yesterday with the principal, John Marshall. In 2015, they had one AP class with 13 students enrolled. This year, they have 13 AP classes with 200 students enrolled. So hopefully, with those kind of programs, peer tutoring, increased AP classes, and increased academic programs, as well as peer student leadership and sports programs, many of those students will stay in class. Remediation rates, in 2014, it was 39.5 for major districts, 63.1. And again, some of the things they'll be working here is remediation will be increased AP classes and much more rigor in terms of the classroom. And the ACT programs, the major districts were 20.6 and IAD 9 at 18.3. And again, they'll be looking at assessment of students, and they'll also be looking at more individualized educational programs. In 2011, Councilman White and Councilman Ryan and members of the school district actually formed a joint education task force. Our principal goal were to establish a positive working relationship with the district and identify partnership ways between the city and the business community. One of the things we identified was the need for mentoring and partnering and tutoring with our students. So one of the programs was a reading buddy program, and we began that in the spring of 2012 at Herenville. And this year, we will actually have 100 volunteers that will be working at Hayes and also at Herenville. And I'd really like to thank each of those volunteers, because it does take time out of their workday, and presently, we also have very strained work loads. But we've been working with third graders, these are students that are at or near the reading level. And we'll be looking and working with comprehension, reading skills, vocabulary, and fluency. Youth council, Councilman White and I and Councilman Bowman spent a lot of time with the school district about five years ago, talking with them about the youth council, because it's another way to provide leadership and give students opportunities that they might not otherwise have. This year, we had 18 applications. There were actually three students chosen. We have our very first student from John Marshall High School, and I'm really excited about that. The other students are from southeast and from Grant. The after-school programs, we're working with the Parks Department in terms of expanding those activities for students afterwards. And the high school academy, career academies, I think most of you will know about that. Those are career-themed schools, some like John Marshall, the School of Finance, and they actually have a Tinker Credit Union inside the school. But we actually helped this year, about 103 students have work experience programs during the summer. And so we hope to really, that program aspect, the graduation rate as well as the career preparedness for our students. And that concludes my report.
All right. Debbie, thank you.
And that finishes up our LFR report for today. There's also a abandoned building report on the agenda. We had our report that Bob Tina did a few weeks ago, and answered, I think, a number of questions for councils and raised a number of questions for councils, so we brought back some information regarding the monies we've expended, the monies we've recovered, talks about some proposed ordinances, and also talks about some of the worst properties that we have in the city that someone asked for a list for. So we provided that. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Continue with the criteria for this egregious properties list. Oh, there's Bob. Good, I didn't see it here. Bob, I went and looked at my two yesterday, and I have so many proper...sorry, I can't get my mic front off. I went and looked at the word "six properties" yesterday, and I think I could say unequivocally that I have many more that are far worse than these two are, and I just wasn't sure what the criteria was.
We tried to decide the best way to do that, and there's a couple of different categories. Some, we looked at the public safety costs that we've already expended. Other was the number of complaints, property maintenance unsecured. I tried to stay away from junk and debris and those. This is just an example. I mean, there are other opportunities or other ones that could have been on the list.
There are other opportunities, certainly.
There are. And we discussed that about what would the criteria be, and so it was a...it's kind of a amorphous question to try to get our arms around.
I had to look up egregious first, and then it took a while to figure out. But, I mean, these are just examples of some of the problem properties that we have.
Thank you.
Well, clearly, you got the word one one correctly.
That was the easy one.
I didn't have to drive by it to see.
I wonder if when we entered the budgeting period, we shouldn't just allocate some funding to do what we did at Lantana. I think we've got to be more proactive in taking these buildings down. If nobody... If nobody, if they don't care about them any more than it's obvious when you drive by them, they have to be impacting the neighborhoods around them. I think most of them are owned by speculators anyway. I mean, you could, you could almost guarantee that. And I'm not sure we shouldn't put a budget. I know it's a tough year to be adding things to the budget, but I think it certainly would be positive, and it might have an effect on getting people to do something about them if they saw they were going to be torn down.
Yeah, all right.
I agree, because I think since we've torn down the seven fire-damaged buildings at Lantana, we've seen movement in the ownership and that we're serious and that they need to do something about it. So I agree with what Pete said.
Is it clear that if we tear them down, we have a lien against the property, that we'd get reimbursed at the sale of the property?
Yes, I mean, that's the same as any demo that we do, even for residential.
I didn't want to be in a situation where playing right into the speculator's hands, because he wants the property torn down anyway. But if we get, if we're sure that we get paid when he flips it?
We may not get totally paid.
Right.
But, you know, there may be other liens and the value when it's.
Absolutely. No, I'm saying that.
We're in line to get.
But we're in the line, we're in the queue somewhere.
Okay.
That's all you can ask.
All right, citizens to be heard. I'll call people up individually. I'll ask them to keep their comments to three minutes or less. Joe Beerschenk?
Joe, let's go over the conference call. That's more so.
Okay. Tracy Burrows?
Hi, my name's Tracy Burrows. My address is fifteen oh seven Northwest Nineteenth Street in Oklahoma City. My councilman is Meg Saly. I'm here to discuss Indigenous Peoples' Day, and in hopes that you would write a resolution in support of this. I believe that tapping into that untapped resource of Native American tourism would be very beneficial for our city. More than a quarter million people come to Red Earth every year, and that money doesn't actually go to the city. It just, you know, sort of goes to the city, because it's, you know, money's spent there. But if the city could work towards a more collaborative effort, we have sixty-seven tribes in Oklahoma City. I'm sure that we could get several of them to work together, and we could have a parade. It would be a real economic boom. You know, the national average population is only, is less than one percent for Native Americans in the United States, but in Oklahoma, it's almost nine percent. And you were just discussing the budget. Well, wouldn't it be great if we could increase the budget with tourism dollars? Because those never go away. They aren't subject to the whims of oil. So it would be great if we could, and the city council has done a really good job of diversifying all of our economic possibilities. And I would really like for you to consider adopting an Indigenous Peoples' Day. If you do, I promise, you can't, you probably don't know this about me, but I will work really hard to make sure that the parade is incredible. I have a bunch of resources. I'm sure that the parade would be amazing. And we can just build on it from there. I mean, you have that beautiful area at the boathouse. We could do like a whole festival out there. And October's a wonderful month to do this. And using some of the parks and resources, parks and recreation resources, you know, to, maybe we could make it a whole citywide day eventually. I just really believe that encouraging this and kind of putting Columbus Day to the side and focusing on who we are and who is here will benefit all of us. I think it's really important for us to be forward-thinking in this. And I've always felt like Oklahoma City is a place of inclusivity, and it would be really beneficial for everyone. So, thank you for giving me my time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
David Yocel?
Paula, you're coming up, Mr. Mayor. She's on, she's.
Yeah, I really can't pay favorites, but, yeah.
Thank you. My name's David Yocel. I live at ten nine two nine East Hefner Road. Since our last council meeting, we've had several people contact us to share stories similar to what Paula and I shared with you last meeting. In some cases, much worse than what we shared with you. But they're afraid to come forward publicly and express their concerns for the fear of the unrest it may create in the community. We have to believe that if the farmers knew what they, that they were putting radioactive, fuel oil laced with mercury and staph infection on their farmland, they probably wouldn't like it either. We are submitting, and Paula will be bringing this up momentarily, some survey that indicates the public health effects of sludge application on land. Out in the Jones community, close to where we live, Jones not only has sludge applied in their town, but towns to the north and to the south also have land application, so they're in a constant state of exposure. We're going to also submit a letter from the former superintendent of the Jones School District. He wrote to the State Transportation Commissioner in April, expressing his concerns about the upcoming turnpike project and the construction that's going to be done there, and what that may do to turning over all the land that's had sludge applied to it over the years, the health effects it may have for him, the community, the construction crews that are going to be doing that. His letter also expresses concern about the health effects for himself, his family, and the community in general. He's not yet received a response from that commissioner, from the Secretary of Transportation. There are alternatives for dealing with sewage sludge. Putting in a landfill is not an option in our area because of the sandstone, and we're going to submit some of those modern options to you to be considered. Question would then be, how do we pay for that? Obviously, there's a cost involved with that. The tobacco industry got to pay for some of the issues that they created as a public health nuisance. The multi-billion-dollar sludge industry ought to be able to help fund some of those things as well. We also believe that we may qualify for superfund dollars to help with this effort as well. Some folks may be upset with the research that my wife has done, and we absolutely agree they should be upset, but not with her. Our farmers have been duped, you and our state leaders have been misled, our peoples, our neighbors, our communities, our God-given resources, and my family are being harmed by this process. Paula and I addressed this in 2008, 2011, and again, last year at various levels. EPA Region Six said we needed to get our state law changed. DEQ, who are very good people, say that they simply ensure compliance with the federal law and that the city owns these contracts. Everywhere we've gone, it seems nobody wants to take responsibility for this process. It's time for that to change, ladies and gentlemen. You are the leaders of our city, not Washington DC, not the folks in the state capital across town, this board right here. If you don't want your family subject to living next door, directly downwind, to thousands of tons of radioactive, pathogenic, toxic filth, please don't subject others to the same. This won't be easy, but if we believe our city's mission statement means anything at all, this practice of land application of sludge must stop. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, David. T. Sherry Dickerson? Good morning. You might want to pull the microphone down, Sherry, and we'll need your name and address for the record.
My name is Reverend T. Sherry Dickerson. My address is five three zero nine Evanbrook Terrace, Oklahoma City, seven three one three five. I am here this morning to voice my support and to appeal to you, the council. I first thank you for this opportunity to address you all this morning. I am here supporting on behalf of myself, as well as several other organizations. I am currently the executive director of Black Lives Matter, and we're here saying that we support the Indigenous Peoples' Day. As a people of color, and as an organization, and as a community, it is invaluable, it is necessary, and it's simply appropriate to have something that places the correct value on something that is historically totally Native and totally Oklahoman. It would be offensive to me for us to not continue to rally and fight for this. It's really senseless that it has not been something that is put in place long ago. It should have originally been done and established quite some time ago. We, as a people, I, as a Native American part of the Black Creek Tribe, say that when you erase or make it seem like the importance and the value that the Native American community has presented to the state of Oklahoma, that's just a miscarriage of justice, of justice in my own personal opinion. I also believe that this would also be something that would help the finance and to help increase tourism and everything for the state. So it's only a positive. It is certainly a win-win situation. So I'm asking you all, literally begging, if I have to, to say, please consider to implement this, to make sure that it is something that continues, and to understand how important it is to Black Lives Matter Oklahoma. It is important to the NAACP, OKC Pride. All of these groups have said that they also sent me as a representative to say that we support this, as well as the MLK Coalition, which I am on board chair of as well, and say that we will constantly be here reminding you of our support and asking for yours as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula Yocel?
Paula Yocel, one oh nine two nine East Hefner Road, seven three oh four nine. Mr. Mayor and honorable council members, not only does living downwind to land-applied sewage sludge make my family sick, we believe it is also contaminating groundwater. We've vetted our concerns with top hydrology and water chemists, and we want to present them to you today. We tested water from two wells situated adjacent to sludged farmland but separated by over nine miles. One was an outside faucet at Jones Middle School, because this school is surrounded by sludge, which concerns us greatly. The other was a privately-owned well on East Hefner Road in an area where the well owners consider the water undrinkable from fluctuating levels of bad odor. Both water tests revealed the same uniform pattern of metals that align with the high-concentration soluble metals in the sludge we tested. The uniformity and correlation led us to request and test samples of the sludge treatment compounds. The metals in the de-watering polymer and the calcium oxide used for lime stabilization are the metals we've identified in these wells and are also the high-concentration soluble metals in the sludge. We understand trace metals can be found in shallow, sandy wells, but the correlations here are difficult to ignore. We also tested the East Hefner well for bacteria due to the odor complaints and found the sewage indicators such as phosphate, anaerobic bacteria, and sulfur-reducing bacteria. Again, we have vetted these concerns, and we submit those studies to you today. There is precedent for a municipality to provide clean water at no cost to residents with sludge-infected groundwater. Secondly, when we vetted this concern, it was considered a slow-moving disaster. EPA requires lime-stabilized sludge to achieve a pH of twelve. Please follow me closely, I'm going to go fast. We produce over eighty thousand tons of wet sludge annually. It is seventy-five percent liquid. It is all land-applied onto our alluvium and terrace deposits, our most susceptible, highly porous, high-flow rate material, part of the recharge area that directly feeds our aquifer. We've done this for over thirty years. USGS and OGS studies indicate our Garber Wellington naturally releases uranium, arsenic, and other poisons when the pH exceeds eight point five. We believe the escalating detections of poison in our aquifer may not be naturally occurring as often reported, but rather synergistically occurring due to decades of leaching twelve pH into the artery of our aquifer. But again, I remind you, this practice follows federal EPA five oh three rule. Third, we submit two USGS investigative reports in our binder today. One done in partnership with the Kickapoo tribal nation near our sludged farmland, indicating a correlation of high pH to radionuclides and other trace elements in their tribal groundwaters. Next, the other conducted on the North Canadian River Basin that notices a correlation of poor groundwater effect to our sludged farmland. And lastly, we submit the 2014 Executive Order Number one three six seven six from our Oval Office ordering agencies to identify and combat sources for spreading antibiotic-resistant bacteria. It is well documented, antibiotic-resistant bacteria lives in municipal sludge. We submit our sludge studies that we did on our independent testing, identifying constituents as hexavalent chromium, mercury, radionuclides, brand-positive coxie, and think about what we have not yet tested for. These things, combined with our groundwater findings, the pH effect on our sandstone, concern us greatly. In conclusion, we must ask ourselves, how in the world have we gotten here? It's simple. Number one, we follow a federal rule. Number two, Oklahoma City drinks from the lakes, not the aquifer. We simply use the alluvium, terrace deposits, and recharge area as the lateral lines for our sewage in accordance with the EPA federal guidance. We believed you should be aware of our findings, and please do not forget. We have dangerous air, we have sick people, it is not just about the water. If you would want to help us get meetings with our state officials, we will be glad to have these discussions on your behalf.
All right.
We will.
Paula, thank you.
Paula, can I ask you one question?
You bet.
And you may not, if state question seven 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 passes, how would that potentially impact the federal?
This practice is normal agricultural practice. Now, I'm not, I don't know everything about seven seven seven. The exception is, unless there's a compelling state's interest, whatever is considered normal agricultural practice goes, it's done. Seven 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 passes right now, unless we consider the health of our aquifer a normal, you know, a compelling state's interest, this thing passes right along with seven seven seven, which is not why we're here. We're here because we've been living with it, and it makes us sick. But it does concern me greatly. It concerns me greatly. Now, I believe, even if seven 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 passed, and we can, are concerned about the health of our aquifer, I think this is considered a compelling state's interest. But I believe it needs to be, I mean, it needs to be considered rapidly.
But seven 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 would potentially preempt local municipalities' ability to regulate?
To regulate, not to change your operational practices, though.
Yeah, that's true. Mark, do you want to say something?
Just briefly, and I've been doing some research on this, and I'm trying to understand it, and I'm concerned about the aquifers.
Yes.
But if you, if you talk about the federal regulation, you're talking about five oh three, correct?
That's right.
And so, in the current scheme of things?
Yes.
There is a federal reg, there is a state statute.
Right.
And there are no studies from the EPA or the DEQ that find this practice to be inappropriate at this time, correct?
I would say, number one, there have been a host of bodies since this rule was promulgated in nineteen ninety-three that have gone to the EPA and said, this is a bad idea.
No, no, I get that. I'm just, for my own benefit, I was just wondering if there are any studies by the EPA or the DEQ that find this practice.
DEQ says this.
I'm talking about written reports, I'm so sorry.
Right. Well, I don't have the written reports for you, but here's what DEQ follows. The EPA rule and our state follows regulation against nine metals and essentially one family of pathogens, salmonella and E. coli. As long as the material meets those thresholds, it's considered non-hazardous. So really, the only thing DEQ has to march against is nine metals and two pathi, well, one.
And I appreciate your comments, I'm just trying to educate myself. And your husband mentioned superfund, the availability of superfund dollars.
Yeah.
Is there some source I can look at on that subject?
I will get it to you by the end of day.
Great.
You bet.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Paula.
Thank you.
Debbie Hoag Downing?
Good morning. Debbie Hoag Downing, fifty-nine, thirty-six, North Sepulpa, Oklahoma City. Thank you so much for this time to address you. I am here with a concern about changing the Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. Many of you were here last year and heard the resolution. the resolution, and probably was more educated last year on the topic than you probably ever had been. I'm a retired educator, and as a retired educator, I think we need to know the truth, the rest of the story. Our textbooks don't tell that. Many times, we've asked textbooks company to increase the knowledge of people, especially the minority people, about the history. Sometimes that has happened to a certain degree, but not always. So now's the time for us to do something. I just heard the report that you all have education as a top priority, and that is fantastic. And now, this is some way, and you want to partner with groups to help with education. Here we are. This is something we can do positive, and it's not going to cost a billion dollars. And I know that you've passed MAPS and you said, now's the time for MAPS, now's the time for this, now's the time for this. Our city has been progressive. Now's the time to do something for the minorities, Native Americans, and to let people hear the rest of the story. We need that. It's time this year. We didn't do it last year, so now is the time. In Seattle, their council passed this 100% unanimous. It would be great for you all to do the same thing because Oklahoma is home of so many tribes. And as you heard Paula go, here in Oklahoma City, 69 tribes. That's a lot. That's a big deal. So let's do it this year. Let's go along with Inadarko, which is much smaller than Oklahoma City, and they've already passed it. Oklahoma City University, the students are out there leading the charge. OU, they did it last year with Robert Henry and David Bourne as the presidents of those big universities, and Southeastern University. All the students, the students are leading the charge at those universities. So here in Oklahoma City, let's lead the charge. You as our leaders of this progressive state and city, let's do it this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Giaccona?
Hi, thank you, and thank you for pronouncing my last name right. Do you need my address?
Yes, please.
My name is Christina Giaccona, and I live on 1917 Northwest 21st Street, and I live in Gatewood, Oklahoma. I guess not Gatewood, Gatewood District in Oklahoma City. And I would just like to give you a little history about myself before I make sure not to speak over my three minutes that are allotted. I currently teach at OU. I'm a professor of Native American music and culture, and I also volunteer, and I am currently the president of Gatewood Historic District. And so I'm here in support of Indigenous Peoples' Day as well. I'm sure you all know about the history, especially since, like was just said, you were here last year and heard the history. But I'm really here as an ally. And what I would like to say today is that while I am a non-native, I really strongly encourage that this be passed here in Oklahoma City, as well as, I'm not a native of Oklahoma. I've actually been in the state for 11 years. I'm actually what they call an educated transplant. I was educated at OU and I decided to stay. I lived in Norman for the last nine years and actually decided to buy a house here in Oklahoma City because Oklahoma City is where it's at. I actually just read something that said Oklahoma City is the best place for women entrepreneurs. And I know, Meg Salier, you have a lot to do with that. I really respect everything you do. But while I'm here is I really want to show my students at the University of Oklahoma that we support all people. And we don't just support people who, you know, had days claimed before this, but we respect people who were here before we came. And so Indigenous Peoples' Day is really a way to show our support, and you will hear more about a proposed parade. So I'm really hoping that everybody can come together and really show our support for all people that live here in Oklahoma. I would like to take this time, if anybody has any questions for me in particular, I can maybe help answer why I support this issue.
My understanding, the United Nations celebrates Indigenous Peoples' Day in August. Is that something you could support?
I would rather strongly encourage it to be the second day of October, and the reason for that is to align it with every other day that hopefully most cities and towns and universities across North America, not just the United States, will also celebrate on the same day. And maybe we can bring in some people into our state on that day to really celebrate.
You know, I've also been curious, and, you know, we've talked a lot about this, but we're talking now about a parade. We have a fantastic parade on Red Earth Day, and that has been part of my discussion, is we have a celebration in the city that's internationally known that recognizes the tremendous contributions of the Native American population. Would you consider supporting the opening day of Red Earth Day to be Indigenous Peoples' Day?
I think, like I just said, Red Earth is a wonderful event, and it really does celebrate Native culture. I think it would be great if we could all align on the same day across several cities and across our state in particular. If there is a way, and I know it's, people are looking at, they're interested in celebrating this day, but they're interested in maybe looking at a different day. I think it might be difficult to convince the other cities who've already proposed the second Monday of October to change their day. So while I think Red Earth is a wonderful event, maybe we can work with them in particular to bring it to this particular Monday in October.
All right. Christina, thanks.
Well, thank you.
Robert Beerschenk?
I've got a couple of handouts. If we could pass them from one side to the other, I'd appreciate it. And I'm Robert Beerschenk. I live at 6,000 North Midwest Boulevard in Oklahoma City. As you probably noticed when you get the handout, and I know in three minutes it's hard to read two sheets of paper. I'm actually the chairman of Oklahoma County Farm Bureau. We had a meeting last night, and there's a set of resolutions here that we passed unanimously. We are concerned about our water in eastern Oklahoma County. I think if Mr. White lived out that area, he would probably be concerned also. And he, I'm sure he has a private well out of his adversary in Oklahoma City Water, I don't think. But this problem that we have with the biosolids application, I think may mitigate a whole lot further. I think Paula probably hit the nail on the head. Our real big problem is, and I've got a bunch of water log drilling reports here, and a lot of the problem is so many of the wells are not logged, they have not followed with the DEQ. I was by there yesterday, talked to J.D. Strong, talked to a young lady in records. So many of these wells are gravel-packed within 10 foot of the top, and in the alluvia some. There's some irrigation wells and so forth that I actually have the drilling reports on. See, I'm at 20 foot down. Right in, just to the east of us, they're mining sand. The alluvia is 50 foot down, or they dig down that deep. They're not hitting any clay. Part of EPA's rule, they think that when they put the heavy metals and everything in, it binds, it binds into clay, all the ingredients. Some type of magic, some guy by the name of Chandler devolved at EPA. And part of your question was, in 2002, there was, EPA requested some college to do a study on biosolids. They came back and they say, we think it needs more study. But as far as I know, I couldn't find anything where they've done any more studies on it. But there are several universities, and all of that has been pretty well vetted. It's been, it's been looked over. It's reliable sources that they're quoting, all the quotes in here. But I think we've really got a problem, and Farm Bureau is concerned. All the members unanimously of Oklahoma County Farm Bureau, we're just going through a resolution process, and this is a resolution that will be presented to our membership next month, and then if it passes there and goes to the Resolutions Committee, then it will go before the convention in November. And I think you all know that Strong Bureau has a pretty strong bureaucracy. Along with that, my son was going to bring up a deal in your, in your resolution, and it's just about three paragraphs down. And this is what he was going to talk about. And of course, he's, works for a big insurance company, and he's on a teleconference call. But this one, he really, he said access to clean, high-quality potable water and public quality is of critical importance. And he's, and the preservation of soil and air quality are also valuable to Oklahoma City. And his statement was going to be, Oklahoma City's the biggest violator out in our area. The biggest violator. I don't think anyone can, in that area, could disagree with that. And so I really think, I really think we've got to do grave concerns. I think our group is going to be on the top. Hopefully, hopefully the city can come up with some resolutions on their own so we don't have to go that far. But the time is short. Legislative session starts in February, I believe. And I truly believe that these resolutions will make it through our process, and I do believe they will be at the state capitol.
All right.
Thank you very much. And if I can help, if anyone would like to see, your meeting's nearly over. I don't know if you have executive sessions or not.
We do.
But I've got some water reports here. I didn't have extra copies, but my goodness, they're pretty alarming. They really are alarming.
Can I ask you a question? Is the governing body of the Oklahoma County Farm Bureau in favor of 777?
I'm not going to answer that. That's each person's, that's each person's privilege, okay? And I don't think I'm allowed to do that.
Are you in favor of it?
I'm not going to answer that.
Okay. Do you think that 777 would impact the city's ability to do things like work to protect Garber Wellington?
Yeah, I think in part of our explanation there, we are calling on the Attorney General's to compelling state interest. We're calling on the Attorney General to rule on that, maybe before the legislative session. The water, our water problem.
I find some irony, maybe if there are supporters of 777 who are then calling on the Oklahoma City Council to try and opine or intervene on protecting Garber Wellington, there's, which preempts our ability to do that? There seems some irony there to me.
No, I congratulate Oklahoma City on the resolution.
Okay.
I congratulate you on it.
On our resolution today?
I do.
Okay, okay.
So on that aspect particularly.
Okay, great.
But I want you to live up to your word, to what you just voted for, in our area too, because we are in Oklahoma City.
I appreciate that, okay?
Yeah.
I have one question.
Sure.
You use the term violation. Oklahoma City is in violation. And I didn't catch...
I said, in violation?
Yeah. The biggest violator was what you said.
Oh. Well, obviously, you're, the air is polluted, and I'm going to go back one step further, back in March.
See, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to...
No, no, no. Well, I mean...
But if there is something that we, some law that we're violating?
Well, I don't think you're violating the law.
Okay, all right. I just want to be sure.
I think our airspace is being violated.
I just didn't want to miss it.
Yeah, yeah. I'll go back one step further. Back in March, the Health Department was called by me and several other people, and I think there was an investigation going on, and all of a sudden, the investigator wasn't able to come back out anymore. I find a problem with that. And I, I don't know why, but I will find out. I will find out what happened. I think an investigation of the Health Department is very official. And I, if there was any reason that he was held back, I will find out who and where it came from.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, this afternoon, the Water Utilities Trust has an item on their agenda to enter into a contract with CDM Smith. CDM Smith is a national water and wastewater consulting firm, and the scope of their contract would be to review our present land application program and our operations with our operations and maintenance provider, and provide findings and recommendations back to the trust for consideration. So we are going forward to review our process. We do believe we're in compliance with EPA regulations, but that may not be enough. So with that, we are, we are going forward.
I agree with that statement. I believe we are in compliance.
We do too, so thank you. And so we are going to take that step and go forward.
Jim, can I say, do we have the, do we have the ability to test for metals and chemicals outside the nine that were, that are in the regulations? Could we, if we wanted to, test more than just those nine metals?
Sure. Of course you could. But that's a pretty good standard scientific indicator of other metals. I mean, it's, we have an industrial waste program that monitors the amount of metals that go into the wastewater, and so it's unlikely that we would peak in a, in a different heavy metal. Is it possible? Sure. But those nine metals that we do test for are a pretty good indicator.
What about bacteria or?
Well, you know, we follow bacteria, we probably take the pH up to 12, which has a pretty good impact on the bacteria. But that doesn't mean that there isn't bacteria that gets...
But we don't, we don't test for?
I don't know specifically, councilman.
We have returned from executive session. I understand there were some people that thought they had signed up for citizens to be heard, and we didn't have a record of it. As long as I can keep five people out here, we can continue the meeting. A couple of us, though, do have a noon appointment that we have to get to, so we'll try to get all of this accomplished. Sarah Adams Cornell?
My name is Sarah Adams Cornell, and my address is 2833 Northwest 43rd Street in Oklahoma City. Will this be filmed? Have the camera?
Yes.
Okay, great.
That's all.
I'm a member of the Choctaw Nation and serve as a board member for Live Indigenous OK Foundation, a group that formed soon after your vote on Indigenous Peoples' Day last year. We are an intertribal group of Oklahoma citizens that advocate for indigenous people